Good afternoon. The meeting will now come to order. Hello, I am Ken Kyler, President of the Board of Education. I would like to welcome you to the November 9, 2022 Board Meeting. In keeping with the Board's commitment to open communication with the community, this meeting is being streamed live on the CCPS website and broadcast live on Channel 21. We are also recording this meeting so that it can be accessed on demand on our website and broadcast throughout the month on Channel 21. Citizen participation will be held at approximately 5:15 and then again later on the agenda as needed. And as of right now, we have zero speakers. Speakers will be directed in the boardroom from the building lobby and are allowed three minutes to address the Board. As a reminder, please silence all cell phones and other devices. Also, Board members, please turn off your microphones when you are not speaking. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd now like a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I now need a motion for the approval of the unapproved Board Minutes of October 12th.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Ms. Vigney.
Mr. Kyler, I do have a couple of suggestions and revisions. On pages three through five, there's pretty extensive notes about some of the comments that were being made at the meeting. And I think it just makes sense to kind of handle those the same way that we do with citizen participation. Just say, you know, the following employee groups made comments and their comments can be viewed online rather than having many multiples of pages in the minutes, if that makes sense to other folks, that we don't have to review them for accuracy or have any issues with.
Everybody okay with that? Okay. Any others?
And then there's one on page 15. Under the approval of curriculum guides for 22 and 23. I had asked that we add some verbiage, and I think staff had agreed, that we were just going to say under the middle school health item, that we were just going to say that there were no changes to the family life curriculum as part of those curriculum guides. It was just a note that we were going to add to that for clarity.
So where do you want it added?
It would be under the curriculum guides. It would be actually on the exhibit, like it was saying that we accepted them as is, but we had asked for that one note to be added. So it wouldn't be in the minutes, but it would just to make sure that it is reflected in the exhibit.
Okay.
Okay. And then on page 17, the very last sentence at the very end of the page, it says to remove the insert of 1C7.13 under the topic of sexual health, if we could just add four grade eight after that comment, just so that we know exactly what grade we were talking about for that change.
Okay.
And that was it.
Anybody else have any other additions, deletions, changes to the minutes? All those in favor of the meeting minutes as revised?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Carroll County Student Government Report.
Hello, I am Nikki Zhang, the Carroll County Student Government Association, or CCSGA President. CCSGA hosted our first in-person General Assembly since 2019 on October 19th at South Carroll High School. I'm proud to announce that we had over 160 students attend our General Assembly. I'd like to thank every student that attended our General Assembly alongside the rest of my Board because we wouldn't have been able to do it without everybody's participation. I am also incredibly thankful for our keynote speakers, Maya Durkovich and David Arwolo, who are the President and Second Vice President of the Maryland Association of Student Councils, respectively. They presented an amazing keynote focused on student participation and opportunity and provided multiple fun, interactive activities that students were very willing to participate in. Following their keynote, we had a feeder school discussion where middle schools gathered with the high school that they will enter and discussed student government and events that can be hosted on behalf of SGA. I have received feedback from multiple advisors that their students greatly enjoyed this activity, and it serves to be a great connecting point for middle schoolers and high schoolers. As the school year progresses and we continue to host more General Assemblies, I plan to continue incorporating these feeder school discussions into our agenda because they seem incredibly effective. The CCSGA Executive Board also has a meeting next Tuesday, November 15th, to begin planning for our next CCSGA General Assembly, and I look forward to seeing students this December. On a separate note, the Maryland Association of Student Councils, or MASCE, is hosting their Fall Leadership Conference, which is similar to our Fall General Assembly, on November 19th. Registration has ended, but I'm proud to say that we have multiple students from the CCSGA Board and from our CCSGA General Assembly that are attending this event. MASCE is also participating in giving every Tuesday this November, a series of weekly opportunities for students to come together to give, volunteer, and show kindness in communities, causes, and countries around the world. Yesterday was to give kindness; meanwhile, last week's theme was to fight against bullying. If students are interested, feel free to find more information about this weekly themed event at MDStuCo on Instagram. That is all. Thank you and have a great evening.
Thank you. We still have no blue cards for public comment? Employee groups.
Good evening Superintendent McCabe, Board Members, and our new Commissioner, Celeste Jordan, President of CCEA. Friday is Veterans Day. We'd like to thank all the veterans whose services has protected our republic and ensures our democratic way of life. CCA recently found a plaque honoring educators who served in the military, and it's on display at the CCA office. I have a photo of it that I am going to share with the Board because I think this side of the Board might know some of the people involved. This side, I think you're a little too young. Split right between Kyler and Bataglia there. All right. Next week is American Education Week. Little history, the National Education Association was one of the creators and original sponsors of American Education Week. Distressed that 25% of the country's World War I draftees were illiterate and 9% were physically unfit, representatives of the NEA and American Legion met in 1919 to seek ways to generate public support for education. The conventions of both organizations adopted resolutions of support for a national effort to raise public awareness of the importance of education. In 1921, NEA and the American Legion co-sponsored the first American Education Week to be observed in all communities annually for the purpose of informing the public of the accomplishments and needs of the public schools and to secure the cooperation and support of the public in meeting those needs. As CCPS celebrates American Education Week, we remind parents as they come to visit to silence those cell phones as you visit, as per CCPS Bring Your Own Policy, device policy, and to help prevent distracting students as we visit. Research shows that parental involvement in schools improves student achievement and reduces absenteeism. Parental involvement takes many forms, such as reading to or with your child, even the older ones, limiting screening time, chaperoning a school event, or simply asking your child about their school day. In the past, I have spoken on the challenges our educators face in the classroom and how Howard County views us as a training ground for their educators. Tonight, I also want to focus on the educators of CCPS who stayed with CCPS and retired from CCPS. Some of these educators worked 20, 25, 30, or even 41 years or more in the school system. We have two educators at Liberty High School currently with 44 years of experience still teaching. I hope all of us can agree that loyalty, dedication, and longevity should be acknowledged and rewarded. When CCPS employees retire, they can continue the vision and dental plans for 18 months under COBRA. This requires an HR staff member to create a COBRA account for them and then close it 18 months later. If retired employees were allowed to stay on our vision and dental plans, paying the full premium on their own, it would actually be less work for the HR staff. Since the retirees will be paying the full premium, this coverage costs CCPS nothing. It is not often that I can come before you and ask for something that will cost you $0 and be a great benefit for not only CCPS retired educators, but all CCPS retired employees. So I hope you will consider that. On a side note, personal note, I guess, Friday is Veterans Day. It's also should have been my brother's 60th birthday, but he died at age 54 from aggressive brain cancer. So I hope as we approach November, we take a look around, tell people who we care about, and be grateful since we've got Thanksgiving coming up. And I hope all the staff has a restful four-day weekend coming up for Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other employee group? Thank you.
Good evening Superintendent McCabe, Members of the Board of Education, and Commissioner Rothstein. I'm Cindy Porter, President of CASE, representing education support professionals who are assistants, clericals, and LPNs across Carroll County Public Schools. Dr. Rita Pearson, an educator of 40 years with a lineage of educators, gave a TED Talk back in 2013, which has been viewed close to 6 million times, speaking about the value of important connections otherwise known as relationships. During her talk, Dr. Pearson referenced a quote from James Comer. Mr. Comer said, "No significant learning can occur without a significant relationship." As Dr. Pearson continued her TED Talk, she went on to say, and I quote, "Every child deserves a champion, an adult who will never give up on them, who understands the power of connection, and insists that they become the best that they can possibly be." Each and every day, education support professionals across Carroll County Public Schools champion our students and many times our most needy students. They support these students during their most challenging times and celebrate successes with these students to keep encouraging them to be the best that they possibly can be. Our education support professionals do this with great compassion, empathy, heart, and yes, expectations. I am beyond proud to stand before you as a bargaining unit representative of these kind and caring people who often do not get the respect they deserve. Next Wednesday, November 16th, is National Education Support Professional Day. As President of CASE and their representative, I would like to extend an invitation to all of you to come into our schools to learn what a day looks like for those in our bargaining unit. And I would also request that if at all possible, to make that time at least a half day, because as many of my peers will tell you, our days and what is asked of us during those days can turn around on a dime. George Washington Carver said, "All learning is understanding relationships." I invite you to come celebrate and learn about those who champion our students each and every day, from those in our offices to those working with students in classrooms, and also to include those who serve in our specialized programs at each level. In closing, I want to publicly thank all of the education support professionals who work alongside me in our professions, always in support of the students of Carroll County. I am honored and beyond proud to be among countless champions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other employee groups? Board Members, Activities, and Correspondence? I think we went from the right to left last time, so Ms. Tedeschi, you want to start?
I sure can. Very similar to Nikki Zhang's previous notes, I also attended the November 19th CCSGA/HEA, and it was great to see students back in person and involved again with our General Assembly and with CCSGA, making those connections between schools. I was honored to host the How to Get Involved workshop with Nikki Zhang. And in this workshop, we taught students how to not only get involved with CCSGA, but also how to get involved with the Board of Education, how to run for the student representative position, but also how to make public comments, so submitting those through email, letter, or giving them publicly in person. We also gave the students the opportunity to discuss those ideas that they would discuss in a public comment and practice giving those in front of students. And that's all I have for today.
Thanks. I just had one quick thing that I wanted to update folks on, and that was on the Family Life Committee. We did have a meeting of the elementary subgroup of that committee last week, and so we were able to get through all of the potential revisions for the elementary level of the Family Life Unit for the Health Education Framework. And it was really good discussions with elementary school, as it had been previously with the middle and the high school. And we were able to come to consensus from that whole group of what the standards would look like. And that is going to go in front of the whole group at our next month's meeting. So I think that that would be in time, as long as the group agrees that we can vote on it with a majority vote, then that is ready to come before the Board at the December meeting. If there's any additional changes that we want to make, then it would probably not come before us as a Board until the January timeframe. But just really good progress being made and really great discussions, and staff was fantastic at that meeting, so thanks for the support for them, to this group, and that's it.
To piggyback that a little bit, there were some social media comments that were concerning because I think you had a reporter here and maybe a photographer. But it's a public meeting, there's nothing wrong with that, as long as it doesn't disrupt a group, which it didn't.
Right.
Right?
Yeah, no, it didn't disrupt anything. I think it maybe caught some folks off guard because they weren't necessarily expecting it, but I don't think there's any issues with it.
But it got you guys covered in the paper.
Oh, okay.
Which is good.
Which I think is good.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that because like you say, I think it caught people off guard, and they were like, is this allowed? And I said, yes, you know, okay.
On October 13th, I participated in the CARES Zoom meeting. CARE is a partnership for healthier Carroll. They do have another meeting coming up soon, and basically what they discussed was ways to have a little more community involvement, you know, reaching different areas of the county, and how we can all partner together to work together to make Carroll County better. On October 29th, I attended the Career and Technology Center Country Breakfast, which was delicious and amazing, and I was so happy to be there and, you know, have those events again. November 4th and 5th, I attended the Manchester Valley High School Senior One Acts. And I do want to congratulate any of our students who have participated in our fall sports and everything that they've accomplished. I mean, I've heard some wonderful things that, you know, were going on around the county with our high schools, and I know many students were preparing for winter workouts and their tryouts. Make sure you check out to see any of the high schools are having any more performances. I believe Francis Gauke has Midsummer Night's Dream coming up, and of course, Man Valley has this next weekend, this weekend coming up is their last weekend for their senior one acts. And we have Veterans Day activities around the county, so make sure to check out for those. Check out, make sure if your school has any Education Week activities. Email the principal if you haven't gotten anything to see how you can participate. I do want to congratulate all of our seniors that are currently hearing from colleges. On a personal note, I'm very proud to say my daughter received, she received Delaware Valley, so they accepted her along with a scholarship, and she accepted it, so she is ready to go come next fall. So I'm very excited for all of our seniors that are getting all these letters and making decisions. So it's an exciting time for a lot of people.
I went to the Carroll County Land Trust Annual Dinner, and I'm mentioning that because it's a nice dinner and you see a lot of Carroll County people, but it just seems like any of those events, something about the school system comes up, and it's way more positive than negative, and I just wanted to mention that. Also went to the Leister Park Walk-in the Park. The Commissioners hold four or five of those a year, I think. And they set that up with kid games, and there were a lot of kids there having a blast. I went to Carroll County Community College CDL ribbon cutting, which, as I understand it, that's trucks, and probably because of the age requirements, it's not something really can be piggybacked with the school system. And I don't know if at some point in time it's worth asking them to include buses, or whether you feel like you already have plenty of training that's appropriate for CDL bus I've always got to try to bring up some wrestling. Morgan State reinstated their wrestling program, and they hired Kenny Monday, who was an NCAA champion and an Olympic gold medalist. I got invited by Beat the Streets, which is a program in Bonnaroo City that promotes wrestling for city kids. And I got to talk to Kenny Monday for about a half hour, but what was really interesting, there were so many young guys there who were Bonnaroo City teachers, Bonnaroo City coaches, and they really almost bragged about their school and how their program was going, and it's hard in Bonnaroo City to keep kids out of trouble and keep kids doing stuff, but they were just so positive about it, and I probably was there, ended up three or four hours, and talking with them. Attended BOE Candidate Forum, which was great. It's so interesting to see all the candidates there, being asked questions and talking. Went to the Career Tech Big Country Breakfast, that was great. I did, I did tell them, because one of our friends was cooking eggs, that my eggs were burnt and I wanted something done about it. So what they decided was they would train me to cook eggs, so I didn't complain anymore. So that was fun. And they had a great Halloween display there. And Dr. Dorsey and I had breakfast before she went out trudging on the campaign trail. Did our agenda review. Again, like the dinners, it seemed like at the polling places, there were a lot of people that talked about schools, more positive than negative, and Carroll County, it's, you know, the school system here is a big attraction. Was a Veterans Lunch today. You guys alluded to Veterans Day at the American Legion Post 31, where they honored both veterans and police officers, a great group, and amazing some of the things that on the policemen, they went through the nominees, not just the winner, and they all could have been the winner with some of the heroic things they've done. And then it always seems like there's somebody there from World War II, there's somebody there from Vietnam. Because of my age, I'm particularly biased. In the 60s and 70s, a lot of servicemen returning would change in the restroom at the airport so they didn't get spit on going out to their car. And a lot of them, it's taken a lot of years, but they're really opening up and talking. And today, some of them talked about their experiences in Vietnam, and I just think that's super. So yes, we want to do all we can this week to honor veterans. Thank you.
Good evening. I've been out and about, but more importantly, I want the state to know that we haven't received our scores yet, and I'm going to hound on this every month until we get them because we are here to help our students with student achievement. So I know they're setting new standards, but that should have been done months ago. So I'm still asking for them to get the numbers we need, the information we need, so we can go and prepare for, I guess, the next year now. But, you know, we've fallen behind, and we just need, we need these numbers. We can't, we cannot help our students without appropriately looking at our numbers and where we need to really accentuate the information to our students. So there we go on that one. And I want to thank the veterans, and I hope you all have a happy Thanksgiving. But last on my list for right now is, this is Mr. Kyler's last big meeting, and I want to thank you personally. I've been with him for two days gone long through North Carroll and wrestling and arguing about using the gym, and he thought wrestling was the only thing in the school or anything that ever happened, even though there were basketball lines and volleyball lines on the gym floors there. He thought wrestling was the only thing there was at North Carroll High School between him and Dick Barline. It was a hard road, but I did prevail. And so, but Kenny, I want to thank you for everything you've done for the students in Carroll County, and I thank you, and best of luck. And I will tell you right now, I'm going to hound you for that $4 million that we didn't get, I'm telling you that right now. And I've got one on both sides, and they can all give me evil eyes, but I don't care because we need that, because the blueprint's coming, and we're going to need a lot more money than that to keep up with the blueprint. So what a greater place than to say all this tonight. And thank you.
I just see you going across the street with a hockey stick. That's all I'm saying.
I will not have any problems. He's got to get rid of all that stuff to get in there, but I will know where his room is. Okay.
Okay. On October 20th, I attended the Equity Council meeting, and at that meeting, Assistant Superintendent Nick Shockney met with council members and engaged in a question and answer session on the importance of full implementation of our required county's equity policy. And as an Equity Council, we are certainly going to be holding the system accountable for implementing our equity policy. And during my time with being out and about over the last few weeks, you know, there have been conversations happening about equality and equity, and someone shared with me that they really didn't believe in equity, they believed in equality. But they said, in believing in equality, there are still differences. So when that comment was made, I said, okay. Now, when you got to the word differences, that's where equity comes in, because equity speaks to meeting people at their own individual needs, and as we look at it as a school system, we're certainly looking at meeting the needs of all of our students, giving each one what they need. And a quote that one of my friends sent me this morning, I'll just share with you at this point, it says, "It is not our differences that divide us, it is our inability to recognize, accept, and celebrate those differences." And I thought that was quite pertinent as I was thinking about our Equity Council meeting discussions. I also, on October 20th, attended 20 Years of Success. It was a celebration of Winters Mill High School, and it was just very interesting, and I'm glad I had the opportunity to attend. I listened to reflections on the history of Winters Mill High School, and those reflections were shared by the three principals. Sherri Lee Bream started by sharing what it was like when the school first opened, and then Eric King picked up as the second principal of that school, and we ended by hearing from the current principal, Michael Brown. So it was just a wonderful, I think, community event, and certainly worth celebrating, Winters Mill High School. And as a part of that celebration, they also had a wonderful slide presentation, and their choral group and band also shared some music, so it was just good. And then after the celebration in the auditorium area, we were able to go to the cafeteria, and there were some displays set up and some fellowship. So it was just a really good evening. On October 25th, I attended the MAVE Conference Program Committee Planning Meeting, in which several of the members reviewed plans so that we can debrief our MAVE 2022 conference with committee members. And that meeting with the members is scheduled on tomorrow. And on October 29th, I too attended the Big Country Breakfast at the Carroll County Career and Technology Center. And it was interesting, as Celeste passed that paper around for us to see that picture, I recognized certainly some of those names listed on that roll of honor. Two were former teachers, Melvin Dowry and Arthur Neal, and then one was a former superintendent. I think I saw it. And then one was a former superintendent, I think I saw Samuel Genesis' name there as well. So certainly, we thank everyone who has served our country in either the Army, the Navy, or one of the groups. And, you know, again, they helped to make sure that we can enjoy our freedoms here in this country. So we certainly will try to participate in some of the Veterans Day activities that will be happening in our schools, and it's good for our kids to remember, or not to remember, but to learn about, you know, our veterans and to share their appreciation. I hope everyone will enjoy American Ed Week. I heard Celeste mention that as well. And I know that's a time when parents can come into the classrooms and see what's going on in their children's rooms. So I hope that will be a successful time for them. And I think I will end by also saying that, you know, with Thanksgiving coming up, we certainly hope that everyone will have a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday and spend time with family and friends, and certainly be thankful.
Superintendent's report.
I would like to be...
Commissioner, would you like to tell us what you've done for the last month?
Yeah. Once I figure out... Is it on?
Yeah.
Okay. Come on, put a tie on for you. I got to be able to talk. And there's not much more than wrestling, I'll tell you that much right now, so. Okay, Kenny Monday's pretty cool. So, yeah, what was shared earlier about Veterans Day, and I'm hearing a lot about it, it does mean a lot to me, spending 30-plus years in uniform as a soldier. This is the first Veterans Day that I'm celebrating, and Veterans Day is a celebration, but I'm celebrating without my dad, who passed away July 4th. And he was a veteran of Korean War. And I got a call from the newspaper a couple hours ago, and I'm like, oh, can't curse, I'm on the phone. I said, what were they going to talk to me about? So I called them back, and I'm thinking, oh, they're going to call me and ask me about, you know, the new board coming in, and what are my thoughts? And I was like, well, okay, I could figure that one out. But that's not why they called. They called because they're doing a story on me as a veteran, and I guess it'll be in Sunday's paper. So I said, sure, I know that topic, and I can talk about myself for a while. And gave them kind of the, you know, details about the 30-plus years and all that kind of stuff, which I'm not going to bore you. But then they said, what does Veterans Day mean to me, and what do I think about it? And that's what I just want to share, is when everybody thanks me to serve, I try to turn around and say, thank you for giving me a reason to serve. When we put the uniform on, we give up inalienable rights to allow others to have the freedom to speak, the freedom to assemble, the freedoms that we, to pray anywhere. It's not the schools, it's not the politicians, it's not the churches, it is those establishments that facilitate those freedoms. But it is the veterans, and it is who we are as a country. It's not to be so profound, but it's just to remind us the importance. And, you know, when we talk, and it's kind of appropriate here in the schools, that we celebrate, not memorialize, but celebrate Veterans Day. Unfortunately, not all schools are doing that in CCPS, to share their views. And I encourage those schools to take a moment and think about the resources, the time and people and money necessary to put on Veterans Day events, to encourage people to come in, and the World War II veterans, which are very few, and those others to come in and tell their stories. It's amazing what, you know, you can hear from a gentleman that can sit down for just two, three minutes, reflecting on a life, you know, that is 50-plus years ago. But to Kenny and I, that's Vietnam, and it's like yesterday. And it's ancient history to so many. So, you know, I, again, don't want to be on a pulpit and be so parochial about it, but it just went from that article, that interview, right to here. And I just want to share that with you. But it came from whoever was speaking about Veterans Day. So, yeah, that's all I got. Thanks. Now, Superintendent.
Thank you. Superintendent's report.
I'd like to begin this evening by recognizing four of our educators who have been nominated for the Light of Carroll Awards presented by Carroll County Public Library. These awards recognize the work of individuals, groups, and businesses in promoting and supporting the power of literacy through acts of extraordinary kindness, courage, selflessness, or education in our community. Congratulations to Stacy Brickah, media specialist at Sykesville Middle School, Asa Evans, first grade teacher at Robert Moton Elementary School, Peggy Miller, media specialist at Runnie Mead Elementary School, and Betsy Wirick, media specialist at Carroll Springs School. The Light of Carroll Awards will be presented tomorrow morning at Carroll Community College. I would also like to acknowledge the service of all of the veterans in our school system and the community. Thank you as well to the staff and students who have worked so hard to plan the many special activities taking place in our schools to mark this observance. It is always wonderful to see our students show their respect for our service members through these very meaningful activities. As mentioned earlier, next week is American Education Week. We are very excited to be returning to our pre-pandemic practices and celebrating with our school's students and staff during that week. The individual schools have been reaching out to their families to share information about the week's activities, and I encourage parents to participate and learn more about their children's instruction and learning.
Thank you. We have one presentation on tonight's agenda, the GT Advanced Academics Program Overview. Mrs. McCabe?
I'll invite Mr. Wernick up to the front, and Mr. Wernick can introduce the CCPS staff that will be helping to present on GT and Advanced Academics.
Good evening, Board members, Commissioner Ralstein, and Superintendent McCabe. We're very excited to present tonight an overview of our Gifted, Talented, and Advanced Academic Program. We have three individuals here, again, who are excited to present. I'm going to introduce our supervisor of Gifted, Talented, and Advanced Academic Programs, and she'll introduce our other elementary and middle school specialists, Gifted, Talented, and Advanced Academic specialists. So we have Sharon Lilly, who is our supervisor of Gifted and Talented, Advanced Academics, and our virtual learning programs. And again, she's very excited to explain the programs that we're discussing tonight.
Hello. Good to see you guys. I am excited to be here tonight with two of our Carroll County GT Advanced Academic Specialists. I have Carrie Butler from our elementary team, and Bethany Leader from our middle school team. There we go. All right. We are here tonight to provide an update on the evolution of our program. In 2018, CCPS formed a committee to evaluate our GT program based on revisions to COMAR at that time. Mr. Wernick was actually the chair of that committee, back when you were Title I, I believe. And they came up with a three-year implementation plan to accomplish their recommendations, which led to this position being created in 2019, and Troy Barnes was my predecessor. And I think he presented to you about the updated mission and beliefs for Advanced Academics, and I began in this position about a year ago. So last year, I began by continuing to align our programs with COMAR, speaking to parents about their expectations and experiences with GT, surveying general educators in elementary school and middle school, and structuring a plan to continue to create approved curricular extensions for advanced learners. Let's start with the big question. What's the difference between GT and Advanced Academics? The Advanced Academics Program is the umbrella that covers identification, instruction, educational pathways, and opportunities for both GT students and highly able learners in pre-K through 12th grade. Gifted and Talented Identification and Services falls under this umbrella, and it's a large part of what our Advanced Academic Specialists do. COMAR outlines expectations for us to document early evidence of advanced learning behaviors in PK through 2nd grade. We identify students for GT at the end of 2nd grade for 3rd grade, but our specialists should work with students before that, teaching convergent and divergent thinking skills, along with analytical, inferential, and inductive strategies. COMAR states that students that are identified as GT will be provided with different educational opportunities beyond those normally provided in regular on-grade level instruction. The Advanced Academic Specialists work during the year and in the summer to write curricular extensions. Going beyond regular instruction is essential for gifted students, who can master grade level expectations on first pass instruction most of the time. While some students may need extra practice or review for grade level concepts, we're trying to build opportunities for the students who do not. The Advanced Academic umbrella also covers options for gifted students and highly able learners in high school, specifically through our AP program and other advanced pathways. When I spoke to parents last year from all over the county, the feedback I received was a desire for transparency and consistency in both identification and instruction for GT students. In reviewing our previous identification data, it was clear that moving forward, we needed articulated guidelines for identification and consistency in our process and expectations. Updates to COMAR mandated that we universally screen all students for GT identification by the time they started 3rd grade, and then again, in the middle school level. We use the cognitive abilities test, or the COMAR test, as do many other counties, for our universal screening tool. COMAR also says we must identify at minimum 10% of our student population as gifted and talented. Before last year, every school was holding their own referral and review meetings to make identification recommendations. When each school only looked at their own data for identification, there can be differences from school to school in how identification occurs. Now that we can easily access our student data through our data dashboard, we are able to look at student data at the county level. And we have implemented a tiered identification system, which means that students across the county are reviewed for GT identification using the same criteria.
Ms. Lilly?
Yes.
Can I ask a quick question about that? You had said that COMAR now requires at least a 10% identification?
Yeah.
And that's an increase from what it was previously, right? Weren't we previously targeting something more in the 5% to 6% range?
I think if you look back, like, at the history of, like, Gifted and Talented, back to, I remember when I was in school, it was like, we thought about it as, like, the top 5%. But COMAR updated, and it was before I came into this role, I think that's part of what that committee looked at in 2018, and it changed to looking at a minimum of 10%. And that's really looking at your highly able learners at the highest level. And, you know, considering that that's what the whole state is doing, it's important for us to do that, because we want all of our students to be competitive with people in other counties and all over the state. And that identification is something that colleges on that common app, it, check that box if you're identified. So it's important for us to, I think, be in line with what MSD is looking for.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I have a couple of concerns with that. One of them being, well, obviously, if we're identifying that many more students, then the amount of resources that we have to apply to it obviously has to change, right? And the way that we think about approaching it, which I think is, you know, what the exercises that you're going through right now. I don't necessarily think that it makes sense to mandate a minimum identification percentage, because I think there are certain characteristics and certain things that, it should be whatever that percentage is of the students that meet that percentage. If it's five, great, you cater to the five. If it's 12, great, you do the 12. But to mandate that it has to be at least 10, it's like, well, if 10% of your students don't exhibit those characteristics, then you shouldn't be pulling kids out of first pass instruction to do special pullouts, if that's not the best place for them.
Agreed. And I think that we, the way we've been looking and looking at the data as a county, and setting up, you know, when we look at the COGAT, the ninth stay nine is really your, that top 5%. I mean, that's like the students nationwide, it's a nationally normed test, that are performing well above average. And then we look at the seventh to eighth stay nine is your above average. It's still an above average range. So when we look at our universal screening, we're looking at those students who are scoring in the eighth or ninth stay nine in English or math, and looking at their strengths in that area. So, you know, you may have a student who's identified in English, but not in math, or in both. And we're looking at, you know, the students who are at the second tier on our local assessments, performing well above their peers. You know, I think when we look at reading levels in 2nd grade, that maybe, you know, an on-grade level reading level, and we have students in our county, you know, if you look at our scores, we perform well above the state average on MCAP and a lot of our assessments. We have bright, capable students. So we have a lot of students who are reading well above that on-grade level, level, that can benefit from that extra extensions, whether or not they're identified as GT. So we look at serving our GT students and any students who really need that above-grade level instruction.
We also, it's also a 10% across the county, not at each individual school. So when you're looking at schools, there may be some that are at 7% or 9%, where others may be at 15%. So it really does differentiate based on the school and what students are at that school. So again, it's 10% across the county, not at each individual school.
Yeah, the term stay nine is new to me. I mean, I just think of things in, like, percentiles, right? But it used to be that, you know, it was maybe like 92% or so was sort of the cutoff for being considered for GNT. And now it sounds like we're going down into the 70th percentiles in some cases. Are you saying sometimes the seventh and the eighth stay nines are being considered?
It's not, the stay nines and the percentiles, it doesn't line up exactly like that. And I'm not a math person, so I... But it's not the same, it's not the same thing. Like, we can look at percentiles, and we, when we really dig into data as we're looking at students, we look at a number of different data points, not just the universal screener. But I think it was important that if we have a universal screener, that we do set some level of this is what we're looking at for GT. And, you know, regardless of other things, if this is the level of the universal screener, we're looking at that as a, I think, a benchmark or a place to start for students.
Okay. No, it's helpful, and I'm just, I'm trying to right-size our expectations, right? Because with the way we had been approaching GT and Advanced Academics in the past, I don't think will work under this new, under the new COMAR requirements, right? But that's basically what we're talking about revamping, right?
It's not, it's not, it was new, I guess, in...
A couple of years ago, what, yeah.
So we've been slow, it's not like...
It's been since then.
Yes, yes. So it's not, it's been like, kind of a slow move, it's not something. And I think that's part of the changes that have been made, to kind of update you guys on, is the changes we've been trying to make to meet the needs of all of our learners in a way that makes sense for them.
I knew Dr. Dorsey was trying to say something.
Oh, no, I was just going to say that when you look at the stay nines, it's just pretty helpful, you know, just to think of the numbers 1 through 9, and then it's really that upper tier, that 7, 8, and 9, those are the levels that you really do see, you know, the high performance at. So I agree, you're not looking at, you know, what we've looked at in the past, maybe, as far as percentages. But again, stay nines certainly are another way to actually look at students' performance. And in fact, some people say that they're a little more accurate as far as...
It depends who you talk to. There's people, I think, that feel both ways, you know, you can get data to say a lot of different things. Yeah.
I have a question, because you said, who identifies these students? Is it the classroom teacher that identifies these students, or is it your actual GNT teacher at that school and looks at everybody's numbers? I mean, I don't know how this, this is why I'm so glad you're here tonight, because this is what I want to know about.
It used to be that referral and review team at the school was made up of the GT Advanced Academic teacher, a school-based administrator, your school counselor, and your 2nd grade teachers.
And I did not like that.
That team still meets. That team still meets, but we look at the data before it gets to that team. So at the county level, we can pull all of this data once we have it. And, you know, with spreadsheets and being able to sort them, you can really look at who's our ninth stay nine, who are students that are the highest tier, and we can sort them out into tiers, so that we can see who meets a criteria that doesn't change from group to group or school to school. This is our criteria of what we consider to be well above average students, students who are scoring above on grade level instruction. And then, when we look at our identification processes, we're looking for traits of giftedness in students. So at the school level, the teachers then, if they have kids who don't necessarily do well on tests, because not every kid who's gifted necessarily does well on a standardized test, and the COGAT is one day. So we can't just use our universal screener, because a kid has a bad day, or they're not a good test taker, it doesn't mean they're not gifted. So we also look at those local measures, which happen in a lot of different dates. So we also look at those local measures, which happen in, in a lot of different days. But then we look at that primary thinking skills, those primary lessons that they've done in pre-K through second grade, where the gifted and talented teacher has gone into the classroom, and they have gifted traits that they're looking for. So those are more behaviors. And then they do checklists, which go to parents and which go to teachers, not just the classroom teachers, but also the related arts teachers too, to see, are you seeing these traits in these students? To look at other ways to possibly identify students. So it's not just one data point that's used, and it's not just each separate group at each school making that process. They're, they know their students, so they're able to provide more data about the students. When, you know, we run the data at Central Office, it's just numbers on a spreadsheet. So we don't really even, you know, look at the schools. We're just looking at what are the data points that we're looking for to meet a threshold, and then it goes to the schools for, to dig a little deeper and to see them as students and not just numbers. Does that, does that make sense?
That's fine, because people need to know that, because people don't, that's why I wanted you all to come here, and we wanted to hear good news, and we wanted to hear how you have changed this process, because there was a lot of negativity with this six years ago, right, Ms. Sivigni? And we were pounding on this, but I just wanted everyone to know how you are selecting these students now, so, and it needed to be fair for everyone. Thank you.
So for me, it sounds like the dip-
I got one too. And, and, and yeah, I'm, I'm concerned about the selections too. And, and I'm more worried, and including more doesn't always guarantee that, but kids seem to get skipped, and then they're bored, and then that's a problem. And, and I hate to see that happen. But my, my legitimate question, the math, the reading, and that all makes sense, I think, to everybody, the non-verbal score, can you describe the traits that are in that and how it's evaluated? Is that more subjective, more objective? Could you describe that for everybody?
Sure. So in Carroll County, we identify for GT for reading and for math. So the COGAT test has three areas. It has a reading area, a quantitative or math area, and then it has a non-verbal section. The non-verbal is more of like your, how, how you logically solve puzzles kinds of things. So it might give you, like, two pa, it might give a student patterns, and they have to figure out what's missing, or figure out what comes next, or there's, you know, folded paper and where the dots would be. So when we look at our tier-one identification, we're looking at the reading and math scores, but again, there are some kids who, when they have a test like that, that's not where their strengths are. So when we look at tier-two, and we start to look at those local measures, we're looking at those students who, non-verbally, like, maybe English isn't their thing, or math isn't their thing, but that, you know, they're more hands-on kids, or they're kids who have strengths in, like, kinesthetic learning. That's where you see those non-verbal scores at a higher level. And we still want to look at those students to, you know, see how we can help them achieve above and beyond.
Thank you.
When we talk about the, and that's, so identification is a big component of what we do, but we also then, as Ms. Sivigni said, are delivering services to these students who we've identified. Before, we had advanced, before, what we've tried to do is build some advanced academic extensions. Before, we had those connected to our curriculum, teachers at each school were really providing support to students, you know, and it looked different everywhere. There wasn't any consistency, it wasn't linked to the curriculum. So over the past few years, what came out of that committee was that we needed to have support that connected to our curriculum. In the past, GT-identified students received support for one hour a week in math and one hour a week in ELA. Well, students with advanced learning needs should experience rigor and academic challenge daily, not once a week. We've moved from a once-a-week strictly pull-out model to a collaborative model. The GT and Advanced Academic Specialists are working with teachers to extend classroom learning so that students are exploring approved curricular standards with greater depth and complexity, both in their regular classrooms and with the GT Advanced Academic Specialists. In elementary school, our students are heterogeneously grouped. In middle school, students move to leveled classes. Carroll County offers honors classes, which provide extended curriculum opportunities for gifted and advanced learners. Classroom teachers in middle school and in high school are content experts, so they can provide very detailed and extended learning for gifted students. The GT and Advanced Academic Specialists in middle school push into classes to co-teach and support gifted students by also working with them in flex, or in clubs, or in applying their special interests through, like, National History Day, robotics, and other accelerated opportunities. This year, we're really happy that we can offer the Middle School Advanced Art Enrichment Program again for the first time since the pandemic. Students who are gifted in visual arts have been submitting their portfolios to participate in this five-week art enrichments program. Our elementary model is teacher-directed. The middle school model is schedule-supported. In high school, advanced opportunities are really student-selected. Our high school students can choose their advanced pathways in their areas of strength and interest. Our gifted students are encouraged to take advanced placement courses, which offer our highest level of rigor and academic challenge. I'm going to turn it over to my teachers, so Ms. Butler can tell you a little bit more about our elementary framework of instruction, and then Ms. Leader is going to share exciting things happening in middle school.
Let me ask one, one more question before you turn it over. I'm curious, and maybe this isn't the time, but should we be looking at how we're grouping elementary schools? Should we be reconsidering that? Is that advantageous for us? Does that make your job harder or easier?
Well, one of the things that I think our elementary school teachers do really well, and being out in the schools, you know, last year with subbing, I got to see a lot of different instruction happening at all grade levels, is our elementary teachers have always worked with groups within the classroom, and they have flexible grouping. When students are, you know, brains or muscles that develop, and when kids are in elementary school, you know, I think we want to be careful about talking about how we track students, but, you know, while they're still growing and developing. And in elementary school, the teachers can move students based on formative assessments and based on where are they on any particular unit. And I think, you know, Ms. Sivigni pointed out, like, you know, there may be students who aren't ready for extensions. And the fact that we're building so many assessments right now, I saw a, a great lesson the other day, and it was at Ed Valley, where the math teachers, they gave an assessment, and then based on the results, the teachers split, and the advanced academic teacher took the students who got it, and the general educator took the students who needed some extra help on that. So I think there's ways that we do, in the classrooms in elementary school, meet all of our students' needs.
So you think heterogeneous is, is, is okay, because they're grouping within each class?
I think that, that, that is, it's a, it's a great asset. It's nice to have the advanced academic teacher there to help with different groups, and that's where, as Ms. Sivigni pointed out, you know, if we're having more students, more staff would always be helpful. And, you know, a, a person who is a 1.0 instead of being split between two schools, that makes it harder for us to be there all the time, but our teachers are working like crazy to make sure that they're doing those things.
I would just add to that, that although our elementary classrooms are, the elementary homerooms are heterogeneously grouped, it's done a little bit differently today than it was done years ago, in that we, we have found that it's better when an elementary reading teacher does not have too many reading groups in one classroom, because we understand that then the amount of direct instruction that each child receives isn't enough. And so we have tried to move to a, a system where an elementary teacher may have two or three reading groups in a classroom versus what we used to do years ago, where you could end up with four or five reading groups in a classroom. And, you know, that's, the, the planning for that is, is too difficult for the teacher and for the student. As I said, the, the amount of direct instruction they receive is not adequate. So I think we've, we've come a long way in the way we look at how, in fact, we are heterogeneously grouping.
So, so it is a lot of grouping going on within the system.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that, that's where I, I was kind of going with a lot of my previous questions and, and other dialogue that we've had on this subject in prior years, was, you know, when, when my kids were in elementary school, I would volunteer all the time and, and saw a lot of those groupings. And it was, there were, in, in most of those classes, there were at least four groups, like, four reading groups. And the way it ended up was, your highly able learners spent the vast majority of their day sitting at a table doing independent study, because the teacher was working with the other groups that were struggling. And I'm like, that, that is not doing anything for your highly able learners. So that's why I was, I was concerned about the heterogeneous groupings, just because I'm like, well, can you group a little bit? Maybe not completely homogenously like you do at, you know, the middle school level or the high school level, but a little bit more to kind of help cater the services that you need for, for some of those different levels.
We've really looked at, in the past, really grouping two to three, you know, groups. And the two groups may be very similar within the school levels. But with us allowing that co-teaching model, with the advanced academics and gifted and talented teachers pushing in, as well as having other supports in the classroom, it's really differentiating, because there are some kids that have certain skills that they really excel at, and there's, you know, and they may not excel at all skills. So at the elementary level, it's really refining what skills are students really capable of doing, and, and where do they need the additional support? So the way that we've really structured this model is really supporting those students who, you know, have some advanced learning capability, and others who may need some support.
And, you know, Ms. Sivigni, while you were talking, again, another beauty is that even though a teacher might have two or three reading groups in the class, they could teach a specific skill, really, to the full class. And the differentiation comes in at the different reading levels. So we might all talk about, you know, identifying character traits or whatever. So in your text or your, your literature for that day, it might look different from the literature that another student is reading. But again, it's the same skill that a teacher could work on. So that's another, I think, way that we've tried to differentiate and, and still give teachers some time so that they're not pulling three different groups and doing three different things necessarily.
Ms. Butler, you ready?
Okay. Turn on my microphone. Good evening. I'll begin by sharing some information detailing what the Advanced Academic's program looks like at the elementary level. Advanced Academic Specialists split their time equally between two assigned schools. We perform a variety of duties as part of our job. Our roles include promoting primary thinking skills and beginning to identify students with traits of giftedness in pre-K, kindergarten, first and second grade students; testing students whose parents request grade skipping; universally screening all second-grade students by facilitating the administration of the COGAT assessment, and subsequently, the referral and review process; identifying additional third through fifth grade students as needed; creating curriculum-based extension lessons for math and humanities; supporting ELA and math teachers when implementing curricular extensions for GT and advanced students; working directly with students identified as GT in third, fourth, and fifth grade in both ELA and math to extend their learning through appropriately challenging curriculum-based lessons; creating and providing professional development for teachers designed around meeting the educational and social, emotional needs of gifted learners. A timely example of what a curricular extension can look like is occurring this week. Fourth-grade ELA students are beginning a geography unit that includes mapping skills. This is also the week that the Sally Ride Earth Cam program run by NASA is operating a week-long mission. Students can submit requests to have a digital camera aboard the International Space Station, capture images of almost any place on Earth. To do this, students must study the orbits of the space station and submit latitude and longitude coordinates of the location they wish to be photographed. The image they request is transmitted back for the student to view. Instruction in latitude and longitude is not a part of the fourth-grade social studies curriculum, however, it is a natural extension delivered in a highly engaging manner. As you are aware, the Advanced Academic's program has undergone fundamental change over the last few years. Some of the positive things happening at the elementary level as a result of that shift include establishing a closer working relationship with classroom teachers, having a bank of curricular resources accessible to both advanced academic teachers and classroom teachers, having the flexibility to push into classes or pull students out, depending on the type of lesson and the needs of the student, and greater consistency in lessons across schools. As with any innovation, we are facing several challenges that impact the overall success of the program. Some of the challenges our Advanced Academic Specialists face include finding enough time to co-plan with all grade levels and content teachers at both schools, continuity of delivering extensions when we are only in a school two or three days a week, and the lack of time needed to create more curriculum-based extensions. Overall, the Advanced Academic's team is excited about the new opportunities opening up for us to align meaningful extensions with grade-level curriculum.
Hi, my name is Bethany Leader. I'm one of the four middle school advanced academic teachers for CCPS. Many of the middle school roles, successes, and challenges are the same as were shared by Ms. Butler. So I'm just going to focus on some of the middle school-specific offerings that we have. The middle school advanced academic teachers, there's four of us, four content areas, it works out really nicely. Each of us has a content specialty that we've been using to help build curricular-based extensions. These are things that can either be pulled by the classroom teacher to use if they need it, if they have a student that needs an extension on any given day, or they're things that can be co-taught with us and the classroom teachers. We push into the honors-level classes at two buildings each. A big focus the last two years has been on building science extensions, including the Arduino projects that allow for coding and electronics alongside the science content. A really cool one in seventh grade where they make a model of a brain and build sensors and, and have to design a helmet to keep it from getting a concussion. We've also been working with ELA teachers on implementing the springboard pre-AP English curriculum in the honors ELA classes, a program that was designed by the College Board. Another opportunity that we have for our GT students are virtual groups. We did these through Google Classroom during our virtual and hybrid year, and the students loved them, so we continued them last year. And this year, we've been working on switching everything into School-Age. I had students asking me at back-to-school night this year, like, am I going to be in the group again? Am I going to be in the group again? So that they, they're things that they really enjoy doing. It's just extra challenges and things that they can go to whenever they need them for all different areas, and including some activities to help them if they're having trouble with focusing and those kinds of things. In the past, we were able to do virtual clubs through that group, and the GT students had a chance to meet with other GT students from around the county, to do things like book clubs and escape rooms, so they had that connection with other students that think in the same ways that they do. Brand-new to middle school this year is the hybrid honors geometry class, which I am very excited about teaching. In previous years, students would either travel to their feeder high schools if they needed geometry, and that can cause transportation issues, and it makes their day longer, and the other option that we had was a fully virtual self-paced course that didn't have live instruction, and that can be a challenge for a variety of reasons for middle school students. So this year, we're piloting the hybrid course to see if it's preferable to the other options. We have 10 students from five middle schools around the county. They meet with me last period of the day via Google Meet and submit all of their work through School-Age. These are all students that were either transferred from other counties on an accelerated path, or were identified in CCPS as needing a further acceleration for math. They're working on the CCPS High School Honors Geometry Curriculum. And if they're struggling, it's kind of nice, I have the flexibility to teach from any of the five buildings, so I can go get face-to-face time with any of the students that might need it. I also have wonderful support from some math teachers and student support staff in each of the buildings, so the students also have someone in their building that they can go to. And one thought that I wanted to leave with is having a conversation with one of my students, and it just stuck out to me as just them talking about how important the GT is to them. They said, "The GT assignments challenge my mind and encourage my individuality and critical thinking. These are skills that help me in my classes and will help me in the future." So, just thought that was cool.
Ms. Leader, that is very exciting about the, the eighth grade, hybrid geometry. I wish it was there one year earlier so that my son could have been in it. But it's a very exciting time. Now, it, does that require additional backwards mapping, though? Because how will that differ from the, so, there's the honors, or the Algebra I in eighth grade, that a lot of the eighth-grade kids in math are taking. How does, how does the, the geometry in eighth come into play with that?
The students that are taking geometry in eighth grade took Algebra I in seventh grade, and then did pre-algebra in sixth grade. So they still have to take those two courses are prerequisites.
Okay. So that wasn't an option previously?
We, like, occasionally have a student who is so accelerated in math that when they come into sixth grade, they're already ready for pre-algebra in seventh grade. So we have some CCPS students too, that is the path and how they ended up with Ms. Leader. Counties around us, like, you know, Howard County, Baltimore County, Montgomery County, many of them have Algebra I in seventh grade, and especially on our south side of the county, when people move up, they're in a different-
And especially on our south side of the county, when people move up, they're in a different math pathway. So then, in the past, we've had students, when I was an AP at Orem's, we had students go to Liberty to take the geometry class, and that's very close. But when we have students who are at middle schools that are farther away from their high schools, it was a more difficult way to make that work for those students. So the Edmentum online course, which we use with high school students, are great, but they are self-paced, there's no live teacher, and for middle school students, that's not always the best match for the way they learn. So we wanted to try this this year and see how it goes. And last year, we had, I think, even more students in geometry than this year. This year, we had 10. I think last year, there was maybe 15?
Well, it was a lot.
Yeah. Yeah, it was, I mean, there was a larger number, and it just, from year to year, varies.
And how do you make parents aware of those sorts of things? Because I don't, I don't think that, you know, at my son's middle school, that we even heard anything about that possibility.
It's usually based on that the student, like, you know, when they, when they move in, when a student transfers from another school, the counselor looks at their schedule and figures out how to offer the courses that they need. You know, at the high school level, when students move in who have year-long classes as opposed to semester, that's where the virtual learning piece comes in to kind of bridge that for some of those students. But I think a lot of it was math teachers and conferences with parents, and it's, you know, part of, we can support our gifted students across the board, but a lot of times, just like in special ed, there are students with very unique learning needs, and we end up coming with very unique learning plans for those students. I believe we have a student right now at one of our schools who's already past geometry in middle school because he's so accelerated in math. So, you know, it just, I think it's, it becomes a very individualized educational plan, almost.
And could I go back just one second and ask Ms. Butler a question about the elementary school? Just since things have, our approach has changed to not just an hour of pull-out per week for ELA and an hour for math, but you've got the push-in to a lot of the classes. How does that break down in terms of the amount of time that you spend? Like, how much time do you spend pushing into, like, third, fourth, and fifth grade classes versus the pull-out sessions?
It's still about the same amount of time, but it's how I spend my time that is different. You know, the push, you know, we find that the push-in is really helpful, particularly in math, to be able to go in and be working with the teachers. That may look like, because I'm only one person in two buildings, that may look like me being in one fourth-grade classroom for 30 minutes and another fourth-grade classroom for 30 minutes. And that's, that's kind of like the trade-off when working with a small group, a really small group, sort of, you can actually sort of intensify the impact you have as opposed to maybe pulling out with the whole group for a slightly longer period. So it's still pretty much one hour of, one hour of direct instruction, whether that's in a push-out or a pull-out format.
Our hope is that then the extensions are continuing when the GT, advanced academic teacher isn't there, that the general educator then, because they're working together, that those are continuing. And that, and those two groups that are in the class, that the general educators also have more resources to pull on to keep that instruction rigorous for those students all the time.
I was going to say, a really nice thing is that the advanced academics curriculum is all accessible to all classroom teachers. They can go into their One Notes and they can find the exact same lessons that I would be using. So the hope is, as we keep, you know, building capacity, classroom teachers will be able to just keep seamlessly working on advanced content.
Did I hear the term "escape room" at the middle school?
Yeah, they're digital.
I was thinking, if this was a real escape room, I may have to come see this, and I may have to bring a cabinet team to see how well we could do with it.
Not to forget our high school students. The Maryland Blueprint outlines different pathways for students to achieve college and career readiness. The advanced placement pathway is one option for our students, and it is an option that we encourage our GT students to pursue. Three years ago, we began offering the AP Seminar Course, followed up by the AP Research Course the next year. Last year, we had 26 students complete both courses, submit their research projects to College Board, and earn AP Capstone Diplomas, which is a designation that colleges recognize as on par with the IB diploma. GT and advanced students in high school can choose to take AP classes all four years. We offer competitive academic career completer programs such as Project Lead the Way, our biomedical science program, and we have been working closely with Carroll Community College to offer many dual enrollment options for our students who want those challenges. We still have a lot of work to do. We are really excited to continue to build opportunities for our gifted and advanced learners. If you have any other questions, we're happy to answer them.
I was just going to say, I just, you know, I definitely want to make sure that we are reaching every school to, you know, make sure we have the potential for the children out there. I mean, I know it's something I've said over and over, you've got one school that may do one thing, another school that may do another, but we definitely want to make sure that we are reaching every child as much as possible for these opportunities, because sometimes we do miss. So again, it's another thing, parent, if a parent sees that their child is excelling and they're like, "Well, maybe you should be in a different class," you know, make sure parents are reaching out to the teacher and principals as well.
And the universal screening occurs at the end of second and in sixth grade, but our teachers still screen students in other grades as well. We have the referral and the review teams at the end of each year, because sometimes students do grow in different, at different times and mature differently. So we look at students in fourth and fifth and seventh and eighth grade. And part of why I think this, why my job is so important, is that, you know, we can look at that consistency from school to school, whereas before, when, you know, this position was kind of with another position, there wasn't that intense focus on that consistency, on building curriculum that everyone has access to. So I agree, I think it's really important that all of our students at all of our schools have the same opportunities.
Thank you, guys.
My last question, I promise. And Ms. Savigny brought it up a little bit about going from the 5% to 10% more resources. How are the numbers of educators in the advanced academic program right now? Are we covering everything or are we? I know, she's going to smack me probably, but...
I mean, our teachers are awesome. I think, you know, our classroom teachers do their best to meet students where they are and support them to go farther.
So you think them working together helps a lot?
Well, I mean, I think that with the increase in the number of students we identify, when you look at COMAR, the pre-K through second grade is something that we've really had to look at. It wasn't necessarily happening before because of staffing. But that's what it says, we should be working with all of those students, not just second grade students. So I know that my teachers, when you're pushing in, when you're working with the classroom teachers, instead of working in isolation, you're co-planning with ELA and math teachers in three different grade levels, multiple classroom teachers at two different schools. That's a lot of time, and when you're only in that school for two or three days a week, that consistency is difficult. So yes, I know, you know, as we look at changes that are happening, that's always something to keep in mind is, you know, could we use more staff to support our students? Absolutely, yes. But, you know, we work with what we have and we do the best we can.
That's where I was going to go with a similar question. Mr. Kyler was, you know, like, okay, obviously, we wish we had more resources, but what would be kind of ideal, like trying to understand?
I think one, a person in each school, especially in elementary school, you know, that would be, that would be awesome, you know, to have. Right now, we have 11 elementary specialists who are split between two schools and four middle school specialists who are split between two schools and also really focusing on a content area, because once you get to secondary, that content knowledge is really important, too. So, you know, having one person at least in the elementary and, if possible, in the middle schools would be great.
Right, because that's a, previously, I think, Ms. Jordan, you would say we follow the "just make it work" model at the moment, right?
So they are stretched thin.
But, you know, just trying to understand, how do we expand that? Because when you, when you look at how our GT and advanced academics compares to some of the other counties that we're close to, you can see some of the, I don't want to say deficiencies, because I don't think that we're deficient, but where we could do so much better with the additional resources to put in that direction. So, because I think we do have a lot of highly able learners that we're not necessarily challenging to the best possible extent that we could.
Ms. Todeski.
For high school students who are selected in middle school or elementary school for the GT program, what does that organization look like when they transition to high school? Does that dissolve? Are they still part of some sort of organization with that?
So with leveled classes at the secondary level, are we, you know, as you get into high school, you have more autonomy to decide what you want to do, and that's true for any of our students. We, well, we talk to our students, and in eighth grade, when they have the scheduling meetings, you know, our teachers are saying, "If you're GT, we're looking at, these are the most challenging classes that you can and should take." And we've opened up more options for AP in, you know, ninth and 10th grade with our AP Computer Science Principles, with, you know, offering AP Stat as a math class that can be taken really at any point in high school. So there are those pathways. The counselors are pretty key in involving students in making those decisions. Right now in high school, I think the big, sort of, students have so many options, trying to figure out what to do, that dual enrollment versus AP is a balance that a lot of our students must take. And I think any of our students who are highly able or gifted that are looking at competitive four-year colleges really need to look at the strength of their schedule. And our AP pathways and dual enrollment are really important to show that you have a well-rounded transcript as opposed to one over the other.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you, guys. It was nice to see you all in person.
Now into reports, the school construction report. Mrs. McCabe?
This is the monthly school construction report detailing our ongoing work on the major projects and other, other projects in planning and design. Mr. Marks is available for any questions you may have.
Ms. Savigny?
I just really wanted to ask about the East Middle School replacement project, just to understand if we have any concerns, whether we can actually be done and opened up before the next school year.
Budget-wise, we're still under budget. We're on it, we're okay budget-wise. The, there's always challenges we go through with any of these jobs at all times, but we're okay. The, in terms of the opening, obviously, it's a summer completion. So it's going to be, you know, another, you know, completion, and then we open. It's going to be tight, but we're on schedule with this, so we're okay for now.
Okay, it didn't look like there was anything behind schedule at the moment, so just...
No, we're on schedule. We get the building dry in December. You can see some of the roof trusses finishing up now with some of that effort. And then, you know, the upper slabs were poured in the penthouses, and they're ready to get it dry soon and continue the interior finishes.
Okay, I was going to ask, if you put it, I missed if you put it back up. Anybody else? Thank you. We now have the ELOSR report.
We had promised the board an update on learning recovery through the summer recovery and ELO programs. Mr. Shockney has prepared a report on our efforts and progress. These programs were mandated by the revised blueprint bill, and federal funding has been utilized. At the end of the report, we provide an accounting of expenditures, and Mr. Shockney will present some highlights, and then we'll respond to any discussion.
Right, good evening, board members. So this past summer, we had another very successful extending learning opportunity provided to our students in addition to what we typically offer in the summer as part of our extended school year services for some students with disabilities. And we also continue to provide our special education recovery compensatory services over the summer as well. But essentially, most of that work took place over four core weeks this summer. For our ELOs, we had a ratio of one teacher to about 10 students. Sometimes that ratio was a little bit less. We utilized evidence-based or teacher-created interventions aligned with our curriculum at the elementary and middle level, and our high school level, once again, focused on credit recovery. We had a school nurse at each one of our sites, along with some mental health supports as we have done in the previous summer as well. And kudos to our staff who worked this summer, but they also received the premium hourly rate for their work. As you work through the report, you can see the sites that we utilized this summer. As always, we get a little creative with the sites that we use. If there's a construction project happening, that was continued, that continued to be the case this summer. Overall, we served 1,672 students this summer across all, all levels. As you work through the report, I've also included some attendance data. Some of our students participated every day or just missed an occasional day here or there. For other students, we seem to kind of fall at the same time that vacations and other family events were happening, so we have the breakdown of data. The other piece that's a little bit different in this report compared to the previous summer's report is we focused on pre- and post-test as the metric for measuring growth. We historically have used letter grades, and although that is a very viable, you know, data point for us to utilize, as we transition further and further away or post-pandemic, our students, you know, aren't necessarily as being impacted by their grades, but we know that there is a need academically. We still identified kids based upon their achievement, but we used a pre- and post-test assessment to measure progress. And you can see the breakdowns, elementary and middle there. And obviously, you know, some of, many of our students met the target that we had established, and it was a growth target, so it was an improvement from the baseline to the post-assessment. Other students maintained or didn't meet the target, but the fact that we still had the students with us and learning and extending their learning was still a tremendous, tremendous opportunity. Pardon me. So we have it broken down by school at the elementary level, by school at the middle school level as well. And then the final portion there on the ELO side is for credit recovery. We had 449 students at the high school level work, and 387 of those recovered at least one credit, with some students recovering multiple credits over the summer. So about 86% of the students recovered at least one, one credit. The second section there is an update on where we are with delivering the identified special education recovery compensatory services, and these are services identified by IEP teams as a result of the impact on our students with disabilities. Overall, we have 1,524 students eligible for recovery compensatory services, and as of the summer, we have completed 880. We have lots of other students that are underway, and we're working hard to be able to provide those services to our students. In the third section there, we also have a little summary on our students who receive extended school year services. We had 360 students receive those. Those are services identified by IEP teams. This is an annual service that we provide over the summer with the intent of maintaining academic skills for students with disabilities. And that was at 360, which is comparable to where we have been in the past. And on the final page, just have a little bit of a summary, looking to where we are now in the fall. The fall ELOs are underway. We're changing a little bit of a structure for the, for the fall. At the elementary level, we're still going to continue to focus on intervention support for our students. But at the middle school level, at the high school level, we're transitioning to more of a tutoring model, and therefore, we're using two different structures. At the elementary level, they're going to meet for, they're going to meet for over eight weeks or a total of 24 sessions, meeting three times a week. But at the middle and high school level, for that tutoring model to be effective, we just stretched it out a little bit. So instead of meeting three times a week, they're going to meet two times a week, and that's been going well thus far. So what's a little different in the after-school model is we're required by, by law to have a little different ratio. So our ratio is one to four during the school year, so it's a little bit more focused. But again, all the other supports are still in place as well. And the final section is just an expenditure summary of the funds that we've utilized to this point.
Dr. Dorsey?
I had a question for the elementary and middle school pre-post assessments.
Yes, ma'am.
Who actually gives the pre-tests?
The pre-test is done by, in, in most instances, the pre-test was done by the service, the teacher delivering the services over the summer. In some instances, the students may have taken the pre-assessment with last year's teacher, but in most instances, the pre-assessment was taken with, with the teacher delivering the service and then the post-test as well.
Okay, I thought at one point we had talked about, you know, some of the testing being done prior to so that the person providing the, the support right away would know where the students were.
And that's the ideal way of doing it, so it's done, it's already, you know, ready to go. And in some instances, that worked out well, and other instances, it was a bit of a challenge. So we were able to, you know, every student got the pre-assessment, whether they did it at the end of last school year or within the first day of, or two of the ELO.
Ms. Savigny?
Mr. Shockney, can you help me understand, so some of these growth targets?
Yep.
That we had for the summer ELO? Say the, the one for math for K to five, where it was, you know, 10% growth over the baseline pre-assessment?
Yes.
What does that look like? So if they, if they had a pre-assessment test and they had a...
Let's say they scored a 60% on the pre-assessment. The target would be a 70% at the end. And that's, again, we're taking, we're looking at a four-week model, and what we did is we work with the curriculum supervisors out of curriculum instruction, and they helped determine what an appropriate target would be for each.
Okay. So you're looking at a 10% growth for each student over their pre-assessment score?
Correct.
So, so that doesn't necessarily have any correlation to the fact that they would be on grade level according to like the benchmark tests or anything like that?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So, would a score, would a score of a hundred, like, just trying to understand, so a score of 100%?
So, and, and it's been adjusted. So let's say, for example, if the student scored 91%, um, and that, we wouldn't expect a 10-point game, 10-point percentage game, their target then became 100%. So anything from 91% was adjusted. If a student scored 100%, the, the expectation was again, was at 100%. Um, so, which again, there's a little bit of variability involved in, in that one as well. So if you, if you look, you can, you can dig through the data a little bit further. There were a lot of students that may have scored in, you know, in the upper 80s and, on their, on their pre-assessment, but didn't quite exceed that target for, for the, for the post-assessment. Um, but they still made great growth. And another thing too is in, in a four-week summer program, oftentimes, obviously, we're looking to, to, to build some skills, but oftentimes maintaining skills sometimes is, is, is a positive as well, given that short period of, of time over the summer.
Okay. So the goal wasn't necessarily to try to get them up to grade level or get them to be above the 80th, 80% on a, on a benchmark test?
And, and what's challenging is the, the time, you know, available. It's for some students that, that wouldn't be a reasonable target to make within, um, within a, a four-week-
Within that short period of time.
And some students, you'll see, some students participate in reading, some students participated in math, some people, some students were reading and math. So the data that you have are the students who were assessed in that area. I wanna make that clear as well too, because not every student that participated was assessed in both reading and math. It was more of what their, what their focal area was.
Okay.
And some students, it was two assessments because they participated in both.
Okay. Yeah. So I was just trying to understand, you know, what, what was the, the growth that we were truly targeting there. So-
Yeah, individual.
I had kinda looked at, so we had 1,672 students that we were servicing, um, and we spent, what was it, 2.6 million? So it ended up being about $1,500 per student. I was just trying to understand, okay, so for the money spent, do we, do we have good growth for the kids over, over that short period of time? And how, what would that potentially look like for future summer programs? Because we're not necessarily gonna have, we're not gonna have that additional money, right?
Sure.
But clearly, some students could benefit from having ELO over the summer.
Most definitely. And I, I think the, the, the progress definitely ties back to attendance. Uh, the students who had good attendance and attended most of the program, obviously, I think had, had greater gains than, than our students who did not. Can you have the data from every student, whether they attended one or all of the, of the school days, um, that we offered over, over the summer? But to get back to your question, I think the key in moving forward is very targeted, specified, um, intervention work on an individual or very small group basis. Um, and us being able to, you know, in the future, continue to identify students that need enrichment, but doing it on a very, very targeted basis, I think is the key. If, if, if in the future, we wanna utilize some sort of summer programming, but being, being very strategic about the, the students that we identify, um, and, and working and providing very specialized services to, to those kids, I think is the, is the, i- is the most effective utilization of our funds.
Can you give me an idea of what that looks like? Like, if we had a 10 to one, uh, teacher to student ratio for the, the summer ELO, but each one of those 10 kids might be at a very different place?
Yes.
Right? And you're trying to get each one of them 10% above where they started, right?
Correct.
How, how does, how does the one teacher cater that to, to 10 different students?
Maybe I, I'm looking back to Ms. Gramata and then Dr. Farver maybe to come up to give us an example. But a lot of that is in our groupings. Um, because again, you know, I think we were very strategic about how we, you know, how we matched the kids with, uh, with, with staff. It wasn't just a random assignment. So students that had similar needs were in similar groups. So obviously, we can, we can target. Um, and then off, also through, you know, just differentiated instruction or kind of a, a, a group rotation within the, within the time available is another great way to be able to say, all right, I'm gonna work with this group of students who have this very particular skill. Maybe the other students are doing something independently or with the work, with the support of an assistant, and then we're rotating through, which is often the model that we utilize during the day with our, with our students.
Okay. That makes a lot of sense. So like, so you might have four groups at Friendship Valley or something, but you're able to kind of group the, the four kids, group the 40 kids into those four different groups-
Correct.
-according to, okay.
Correct.
Some similarities in-
We were able to keep the staff who were, the teachers who work were teachers from those, from, you know, of the schools, but not necessarily that student's teacher that, that they had. And then again, that gives us flexibility to, to, to group.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm curious. So for this program, we identify students, we invite them, we can't make them come, we can't punish them if they don't. Do we track the ones that don't come? Do we try to get them tutors? Do we try to get them something after school during the year? And I know we can't, you can't push a rope, but, um, how do we track the kids that don't take advantage of this?
That's, that's where the collaborative problem-solving process at each school comes into play. So the elementary level, for example, if a student is struggling, they have a collabor, they have multiple collaborative teams that are problem-solving and developing interventions for that student. So those are, that's a student that may receive their interventions or extra support, you know, during the day, during the school year. This is a tremendous opportunity because you get a great, you know, it's a great opportunity for a student to get some really individualized support from a, from a, from a, from a teacher. Uh, but then that, they would come into that kind of monitoring process that happens throughout the day and throughout the school year. It just may mean their interventions take place during the day. The only challenge with the, during the day intervention is obviously it comes at the, you know, there's, there's only so much time available in the day. And if you're getting an intervention, you're missing something else. And yes, we're very strategic about what you're missing, but it does, you know, have an impact. This is, again, was a great opportunity for us to provide a lot of services to, to students without them having to miss anything else as part of their day.
Any-
Yeah. I was just looking at some of the results at the elementary level and, you know, for the, the percent of reading that the targets were met ranged anywhere from 32 to 89%. And on the math side, ranged anywhere from 37 to 92%. So clearly, there's a lot of variability in there.
There is. And a lot of that gets back to the, you know, the attendance rates, um, for those students as well, too.
Right.
I'll say ad freshly, just the students, the schools that didn't see the growth had less consistent attendance, um, than the schools that I think that the students that did come regularly.
Right. Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you. Staffing analysis and class size report. Mrs. McCabe?
Annually, we present a staffing analysis and class size report. Mr. Shockney and the directors will present an overview for this year's report. It is worth noting that the staffing will be an area in the future that it's impacted by the blueprint requirements.
All right. I'm back again. And this time, uh, the school level, school directors will, they'll get to, you can come on if you like. Um, so, just the, the, the cover page is an overview of our, of our average class sizes. Um, at the elementary level, our average class size is 22.3, up from 21.3 during the 21, 22 school year. At the middle school level, our average class size is 25.1, up 22.5 from 21, 22. I'll also back up and say at the elementary level, we have no class sizes above, uh, 30 or more students. At the middle school level, we have 197 classes above 30 students, up from 157. Um, and then at the high school level, um, we remain constant at an average class size of 23.2. And we also remain constant at our number of academic classes above 30 at, at 217. A lot of our changes and, and transitions are, I can attribute to, um, little increases in student enrollment, which is a good thing and a challenge at the same time. Um, but especially at the elementary level. And we did see some isolated places throughout the system, both at the elementary level and at the high school level, where we had some late, um, summer enrollments. And that always poses a challenge because the three school-level directors work very hard and strategically monitoring numbers throughout the summer. Um, but there comes a time in August where they have to make their final allocations to sta, of staff. And then what happens beyond that is a, is a challenge to adequately respond to with additional teachers because we've already allocated our staff. But waiting any longer than that time in August then presents a challenge with, with being able to hire staff in time for the, for the start of the school year. Um, but there's also a summary in here, um, of our students. Uh, it's very detailed at the high school level, including our programs that our students participate in, as well as our, um, our, our special education staffing as well. But we're here, we'll open it up for questions.
Ms. Vigney?
So I, I thank you for this report, by the way. Um, and I know we had had some conversations earlier in the year about some of those enrollment surprises, right? Where like, oh my gosh, you know, we ended up with, you know, 30 additional kids at Carrolltown Elementary. I, I forget exactly the exact locations, but you know, in one particular grade. And you guys did a great job of, um, fix, you know, figuring out how to deal with that very last minute. But how many of those kind of situations did we have? Like, did, where you had to plug in an additional teacher because, i- if, for a particular grade and a particular school because of those enrollment surprises?
Well, we, we, after kind of about mid-August, um, we, we can't adjust the staff anymore because we hold on our last few FTE that we have. And then we make that assignment typically mid-August. Um, but it's after that. What we typically do, and, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong in this, but, um, you know, when we have beyond, once we've made our final allocation of staff, if our class sizes do go up, we do get creative with our support staff, with our math, uh, with our reading and math specialist and resource staff, um, with our instructional assistants. So when those classes, especially at the elementary level, are a little bit higher, we then push in some supports to help make that a little bit more manageable, um, during the course of the school year.
So, and I, I, I did notice the, what you had pointed out, the, the increase at the middle school level and the average class size. You know, it was pretty, pretty consistent for elementary and, and for high school, but a little bit of a bump at the middle school.
Correct.
Was that driven by anything in particular? Or was that a conscious decision of trying to reduce maybe a, a, a classroom or two, you know, across the county?
Sure. Yeah. So, um, we definitely had some increased enrollment as well. Um, but we also, our, our staffing hadn't been shifted for several years. So we did do some shifting among schools. Um, it went school going down 300 students and still had the same staffing it had prior. So some of that shifting had some impact as well, especially with our class sizes over 30, um, because that school was kind of an outlier. Um, so, so those were the main pieces, I think, um, that would, that would constitute that. We also have moved into, instead of having, um, multiple, uh, basic level classes, we have shifted to make them a little bit larger, um, and providing additional staff within the classroom to do that co-teaching model as well. So that's been really helpful and super effective and helping the academic level classes not be, you know, the level six class is not getting as large. So it's kind of Robin Peter to Pay Paul kind, you know, kind of idea. Um, but that has, that has been really helpful as well. So kind of, that, that in some ways affects that overall staffing. So we're, we're reducing, we're raising class sizes in one way, but reducing them in, in, at the exact same time. But it just doesn't look that way on paper, if that makes sense.
Does that work out okay? Like, with the performance of the students? So it sounds like we're making our development level classes a little bit larger.
But with multiple, so, but they would have two teachers in there. So we did extensive training over the summer with those teachers. So we're able to, like, we talked about, you know, um, over the summer, that kind of dividing into small groups and individualizing what that instruction looks like.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so using our resources that way. Um, and it's been very effective. We've had follow-up PD going throughout the year, um, with Patty Hill and Christine Bechtel. So it's, it's been going really, really well. Um, so we're anxious to see what that looks like, you know, as far as student results. Um, but it has helped reduce some of the class size in our academic of our level six classes that were always the ones that kind of took the brunt of it.
Okay.
Of having the extra small classes. So it kind of, it's benefiting both groups.
Okay. I'm really curious to see the-
Me too.
Now, that's, that's-
Yeah. We're excited.
Okay. I don't know if others have-
Any other questions?
So, um, just wanted to kind of think of this in the context of the, the blueprint-
Yes.
-and where this is all going. Um, you know, if we're, if we're not getting the, the level of state funding that we would need to necessarily meet, you know, the, the planning requirements, you know, the, the 60/40 planning requirements and-
Most definitely.
And we wouldn't be able to increase staffing levels. That inherently means that the only other lever we have is to increase class sizes. It's, it's not ideal, certainly, but just trying to understand what that might look like and what kind of impact it would have on this report.
It, it will have a, a significant impact, as Ms. McCabe had said earlier. Um, if we don't have the, you know, additional funding for, for more staff and we have to get creative way, get creative with what we have, um, that is only gonna result in greater class sizes, uh, across the, the board for our, for our students, um, which will have a significant impact. Um, you know, that's always been a, a feedback piece of, a point of feedback from our, from our staff. The, you know, obviously, the smaller the class size, the more individualized attention our students can get. Um, and the more manageable it is, you know, and the better, and, you know, the more effective our instruction is. But no doubt about it.
I would just add to that, that not only will the planning time requirement in blueprint, um, force us to either add staff or raise class sizes, but also the equity component of the blueprint will require us to place more of our human resources at our, um, neediest schools. And so if we don't increase staffing, what that looks like is pulling staff from other schools, raising their class sizes to put those, uh, teachers and assistants in schools that, um, that are serving our needier populations.
Okay. And as we're trying to figure this out over the next year, you know, how, how the blueprint will be implemented, I think that's something that we really need to understand, right? Because we can say, okay, well, the, the planning requirements would say, um, along with the equity component, might say that we need to increase staff by 200 teachers. And that carries with it X dollars of, of financial impact on the budget. Alternatively, that means that if, let's say that we don't have any money for additional staff, what does that turn this report into? Like, we need to understand kind of the implications of that because that's gonna have to be part of our business case for, we have to have this amount of monetary resource or, or th- these are the ramifications for it.
Right.
This is how ugly-
Right.
-the class size report is going to get-
Mm-hmm.
-if we cannot add any staff. Like, I think we need to understand the, the bookends of that.
Absolutely. And that's what we're, um, that's what we're analyzing right now, um, is, you know, how, how will this look in a system where, uh, we can't, we can't create extra staffing and we've just gotta work with what we have? You know, we could be looking at class sizes in the 40s at the elementary levels in some schools, um, in order to, um, increase staffing in our Title I schools and other, other schools that, that have our students to our, um, ELL and farms populations.
And I know you guys have all been to some different things with, uh, talking blueprint. How many counties are in our position? Some of the really small ones might be okay with money. Some of the big ones might be getting too much money. But how, how many counties are, are getting, uh, can't think of a nice word, taking advantage of with the formula?
I would say that we have probably about two or three other districts that are in a similar situation to us.
So a small percentage of overall.
Yep.
What would those jurisdictions be, Ms. McCabe?
Um, I would, thinking back, I would say Caroline, um, Garrett, Kent.
Because I'm, I'm just wondering, uh, who else will support us and, uh, who, who we, who we start fighting with to get more money? And I guess the answer is everybody we need to fight with. But I just, uh, I don't know what's happening on the state level. When you guys seem to report or meet, it's almost like it's fallen on deaf ears.
Yes. We, I think, um, I think we, as well as all the other jurisdictions, are meeting regularly and making sure that, um, that the state knows what our challenges will be and, and what they're looking like as we, as we work with our teams to plan for the blueprint.
Any other questions? And I assume still no public comments. And now, and now we'll move into action items. I now need a motion for the approval of the award of bids.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Mrs. McCabe?
Okay. There are six items on the award of bids. Uh, first is the architectural and engineering services for a feasibility study to evaluate addition options at Freedom Elementary and Sykesville Middle Schools. We discussed the steps going forward when the SARC presented its report in August. In September, the board determined that the next step would be to begin the procurement process for feasibility studies for additions at Freedom Elementary and Sykesville Middle, which were components of the SARC plan. We had a large response to the RFP, and I'm recommending that the board award the contract to Samaha. We are very pleased that the contract price is about half of our total estimate. Any questions about that before I-
I do have a question. And, and- I do, because, and, and I wanted to ask about that, because we were saying about $80,000, but I thought that that was each, right? That we are expecting it to be one for Freedom and, and one for Sykesville Middle, so this is, but this is the combination of both?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
So is it reasonable to assume that the $98,000, that about half is for each project?
Yes, maybe $5,000 difference between the two sites. And we estimated $100,000 each or 200 total, so this comes in a little less than, than half of that estimate, but includes all of the, the additional look at civil engineering that we wanted to undertake. So we're, we're very pleased and happy and excited. And the firm recommended has a local presence as well, which is nice.
Okay, that, that was the other question that I had, was Samaha, have they done any other work for CCPS in the past?
Not for us, but I think, and their civil engineering services are local, right? Their, their civil engineering function is located in Carroll County, though. So I think they're very interested in the work.
Okay.
And, and I think it's comforting, you've got a lot of bids.
A lot.
And you do have two other relatively close that you gave fairly good technical points to, so it kind of supports that this, somebody didn't just lowball this, it's a responsible bid.
Yes, we were nervous, as you could tell, that night. We're very pleased by the competitiveness, the response, the volume and, and the overall quality, so this, this turned out really, really well.
Okay, second on the award of bids is the playground addition at Mechanicsville Elementary School. These next two items are for equipment and installation for playground additions at Mechanicsville and Runnymede. The schools and their PTA, PTOs have raised the funds to complete the, the additions to the playgrounds. And then number three is the playground addition at Runnymede Elementary School. Number four, custodial supplies. This is an annual buying list for custodial supplies for the system. Fifth is supply and delivery of heating oil. This is an annual contract for the supply and delivery of heating oil. And then finally, number six, furnish and installation of hot holding cabinets at 23 schools. This award is through the Food Services Program Fund to furnish and install these hot holding cabinets at 23 schools.
Ms. Vignan?
Ms. McCabe, I did have a question on number five, the supply and delivery of heating oil. So there, there was only one bidder on that, or are we concerned about the, the singular bid?
We would have liked more competition, but having looked at some of our colleagues around the state to see what their recent experience has been, that's not atypical. And in this case, this is a vendor that we have experience with and, and good experience with here in, in our school system, so we're, we're pleased with that.
Okay. So do you, do you have an idea of how much of an increase that, so this new, you know, minus .25% per gallon and the, the plus .135?
I don't think we're projecting, yeah, we're not projecting an increase, but that's a commodity where the market can move throughout the year, although that's always been the case throughout every year as well.
Sure, sure, okay. But this, these are the same bid factors that we had in the, in the past?
It's the same pricing terms.
Same pricing.
Okay, same pricing terms, okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I now need a motion for the approval of the forest conservation easement for East Middle School.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second that.
Mrs. McCabe?
This is the approval of the easement for the required forest conservation plan as part of the East Middle School construction project.
And, oh, I was just saying, so this has no fiscal impact, correct?
Yeah.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I need a motion for the approval of the school calendar for 2023-2024 school year.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Mrs. McCabe?
The school calendar was submitted for two months of public feedback after the September meeting and now returns for board action. As a reminder, some highlights of the proposed school year 23-24 calendar are, school starts the day after Labor Day on September 5th and ends on June 13th for students. It includes five inclement weather days. Winter break begins on Monday, December 25th, with students returning on January 2nd. And spring break is Thursday, March 28th through Tuesday, April 2nd. And I believe you got a summary earlier this evening of public feedback on this item.
Dr. Dorsey?
You know, it's still concerning that we do have school on the Jewish High Holy Day. Again, I think for the 23-24 school calendar with Rosh Hashanah starting on Friday, the 15th, you know, it really rolls into the weekend, so we're okay there. But again, when we look at the 9/24, Sunday 9/24 for Yom Kippur, that Monday, the 25th, is a part of their, their High Holy celebration. And again, I just wish we could be respectful and I was sort of looking to see if there was one place where we could take a day to accommodate that. Again, I know it's just me and it's just my thinking and, you know, it seems like I've had more emails than what's reflected here with the feedback. Looks like from this feedback sheet, there are only about three or four comments that were sent in, but it seems like I had certainly received or read more. So again, it's just concerning and I, I think when we again, you know, try to talk equity and, and try to be respectful of others, I think we should certainly try seeing what we could do as far as making sure we're giving that 9/25, that High Holy Day. It says it's their holiest day. I'd love to see us be able to have a holiday for them.
Any other comments or questions? Yeah, I, I think, I was surprised by the, the different comments and not a lot of any. It did come up again about the pre-Labor Day start and I just, I'd like to caution people who fight for that, look at how many schools this year in August closed days because of heat. And, and that's a risk when you're in August. And, and some of them that request that talk about the, the advanced placement tests at the end of the year. And I, I know my kids, I, I don't understand one more week, eight months before being that advantageous, but, but, and, and, and Dr. Dorsey, I did see some on the Jewish holidays. Again, I looked to, and I talked to a couple of Pikesville people in Baltimore County about it and they, some years they go to school, some years they have in-service days, but they don't have, the schools closed and obviously their population. Now, the one issue in, in Baltimore County, and I don't know if we have the same thing here, Pikesville probably has, it used to be around the city was, was a larger population, but it seems now it's more condensed in Pikesville. But the people I talked to were happy with the situation. You know, they said, which, which you've said before, we do accommodate that day of no test and, and excused absence.
Yeah.
And, and like I say, it's, and even Baltimore County, the, the staff works that day. And I don't know what, 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 what do you do for accommodations for them? They take leave?
Yes, if, if someone wants to take off to celebrate any religious holiday, they can do that. They can certainly take off that day.
Did we hear from someone who said that there was either a test or something big that had happened in the class on that holiday?
We had heard that there was a, a staff meeting that occurred on a Jewish holiday where, where faculty needed to attend in order to get professional development that they needed. So we did address that right away.
I was going to ask about that one in particular, it's like, we need to make sure that we do respect that, you know, nothing mandatory happens on those days.
Right, and, and we do send out reminders about that.
Does anybody else have any serious thoughts about that or any other aspect of the calendar? And all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I will call opposed this one.
Okay. Thank you. Now I need a motion for the approval of revisions to the portable electronic devices policy.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Mrs. McCabe?
The BYOD policy was brought for discussion last month and is returning for action tonight. There are no revisions to the policy and you have, also have a summary of public feedback on this item as well.
Yeah, regarding the feedback we received on that, I was, was not surprised, it was quite a bit of get rid of, get rid of, stop, 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 shouldn't be in the schools, you know, cell phones off, you know, not in the bathrooms. And I, I am happy to see the community is, there, there is a lot wrapped around on this going enough is enough of this in the schools, so I'm, I'm very happy to see that. Yeah, we definitely need to make sure we're getting back on track, you know, we already have the computers, so there really is no need for the students to have them in the classrooms, keep them put away in the book bags, don't need to take them to the bathrooms, don't need them in the hallways, just let's get back to everything we need to do, because it does, it would help bring down a lot of the temperature, I think, of bullying of that nature that we do see in the school system, so I think that would definitely help a lot.
And I think the students are getting used to us getting back to the stricter management of their cell phones and making sure that they're not using them in class and in areas where they should not be using them.
Yeah, that's, they need to get back to, again, face-to-face interactions.
Exactly.
Definitely.
I would agree with that. I heard a lot of feedback from my own kids and, and a lot of their friends and, you know, there was a lot of grumbling about it the first couple of weeks of school, but as time goes on, they're all like, okay, this is just how it is, right? Like, so it's like give them structure and, and it's going to work, right? So, and I think the community is generally behind it, so I, I think that the, you know, administrators have done a great job of figuring out the, the way to handle this and being consistent and as long as we allow them, you know, some flexibility, but, you know, general consistency across the system, I think it's working out really well and, and the public seems to be behind it, so.
Yeah, I do too.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I now need a motion for the approval of revisions to the marching band uniform purchase policy.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Mrs. McCabe?
Last month, the policy on marching band uniforms was also brought for discussion and returns this, this evening. Mr. Wernick is here to summarize the revisions and answer any questions that you may have.
Good evening again. We made a couple of revisions. We included the words marching band in front of any area where it had talked about just being banned, that had been brought up. And we included information of the average cost, there were some questions about the average cost of the marching band uniforms. It ranges roughly in our county around $400 per uniform to about $570 per uniform. We have around 275 students currently in marching band across all our high schools currently, and that was another question that was, that was brought up. And I believe that information went to you specifically of how many per high school, each high school that we have. And roughly the cost for some of our high schools, the smaller high schools run around 28,000, but we've experienced some high schools that are up close to 40 or 45,000 for their marching band uniforms currently.
And, and this one, we received no feedback?
No. But Mr. Shockney could probably provide feedback as a marching band parent.
Please feel free.
So he sent an email?
No, I'm just kidding.
Isn't there some feedback here on the band uniform policy? The CAC looks like it has.
Yes, it is, yes, that, that didn't come through public comment, that came through the CAC process that Ms. Gaddis manages. Thank you for, for reminding us that that's there too.
So you were saying that it's, what was the expenditure per school? So we're limiting it to 14,500, but the.
Right, the, the, the least in the current, past five years was 27,643 and the most at this point was 39,647.
Okay.
And that's within the last three cycles, three years.
Okay, so for some schools it'll be about 50%, for some schools it'll be closer to a third?
Correct.
Okay.
And it also depends on what type of uniform or that they're really looking at. You know, the ones that the price wasn't as high, their uniform cost was about $400 per uniform, where the cost for a school that was more expensive was close to $570. So you're talking, you know, 100 and, you know, some dollars more per uniform. So they, they can vary the price based on what they're looking for in, in the actual uniform.
So Ms. Herbert, I know you've made comments in the past that, you know, when we went to the Formod Day, it really hurt a lot of the extracurriculars and, and, you know, band being one of them. I don't know if that also impacts the marching band, so it looks like we only have on average about 40 kids in the marching band per high school.
It's sad, because it did, it has ruined all those type of activities. I will tell you that, because, because with Formod Day, they had to get all their academics in and then they were really pushing AP and I do understand that, but they do need to be children and they're students and it, it killed the choral concerts, the choral program, it killed all the electives, band, phys ed, art, it, it killed all of them. So one day we need to address that, like we've talked.
We have, but we have, we are scheduled to have a presentation in January at, at our January board meeting on the Formod Day, so that we can start that discussion.
Okay, and all the various impacts that it has?
Yes, the pros and cons of each.
Right, because blueprint may impact that, right? Okay, because I'm just curious if, if it happens that marching band participation increases, you know, with all the changes that are going on, if the size of the marching bands increases, then that 14-5 may become insufficient. You know, if suddenly the, the marching band size increases on average from 40 to 60, then, then that's a very different cost. How does the, how does the differential between the 14-5 and the actual cost get made up? Is that fundraisers by parents?
Correct, it's through the boosters.
Through the boosters, okay.
And, and this 14,500 really isn't new, it has been in the, in the process for about the last seven to 10 years. It's just, has not been revised in the actual document.
Okay.
And I, I will say that I know in way before the, the Formod Day, like South Carroll had over 100 kids in their bands and they would go to the Thanksgiving Day Parade and they'd go to other big parades around the country. And that 15, 14,000 would, you know, only be a dent in that, but I, I like the Formod Day in certain ways, but it, it does really hurt your, your elective, so that would, could change, so.
And if my memory was correct, back then when I wasn't at wrestling practice, they also had some good band boosters and when they had bigger numbers, they were raising some serious money too.
And they did, they do raise, I mean, when I was at North Carroll, they ran the food, the vending, the food.
Yes.
At all the, at all the home games. That was a moneymaker for them. At all the, at all the home games. That was a moneymaker for them. And that was set up with the very first principal there. And the athletic boosters didn't get that. The band did. So, they made a tremendous amount of money off that. And, and they do work hard. Those band, all boosters do. But those, they want them to look sharp and crisp on, on a field because they do a lot of major competitions. But things have changed so much, so.
Ms. McKay, with that coming to the board in January, is there a way to look back, and I hate to say go back 20 years to when the Formod Day was changed, but is there a way to go back to see the level of participation beginning in elementary school with instrumental music, when they go, use that to go into the high schools, if they continue to participate from elementary all the way into the high school with instrumental music for the band? So, it's, it's, like, I guess we could just see if it's something that's occurring maybe in middle school, if it's dropping off, or if it's potentially economic. We know with COVID, that had a lot to do with it. We know a lot, a lot of that to dive down during COVID. We know that. But I wanted to...
As we prep for that presentation, we can take a look at, at instrumental music and, and how that looked throughout time based on what the data we have historically. And I'm not sure what that is right now, but we'll look to see what we have.
Yeah, no, it's a lot to kind of try to unpack with that. But I think it's something that you can look in to see if there's a trend. If there's something that we're missing potentially that, I'm not saying whether it is the Formod Day or not, but I'm saying if there, was there a trend somewhere where that could have potentially, you know?
There wasn't any trend. I'll tell you that right now. When they came to the Formod Day, they had four classes. That was it. And they couldn't, and they couldn't get it in. So, I'm, I'm not being mean.
No, no, no.
I'm telling the truth. It just, it killed everything. And I'll never forget, we would have a whole football field full after school practicing on that, on the football field. But it was many other things, too. But then, when that happened, I think North Carol ended up with 15 kids on the field. And that was really sad. And it was all because of the Formod Day. So, I, I just, I knew that. I lived it.
Yes. I would say, I think the, the 14-5 makes sense in the context of where things sit today. But if something, if we should make some changes and the, the size of the, the marching bands increases, then we might want to come back and revisit that.
Yeah. And I, I want people to know that there are really good things about the Formod Day. But then, when you looked at how many people really lost jobs, and if you were our teacher, you ended up at, you know, you were either rift or you ended up working at two different schools because of that. So, yeah. I just want to make that clear.
Any other questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I now need a motion for the approval of personnel action items.
So moved. Second?
Mrs. McKay?
The monthly personnel action items update on hiring is for over this past month. There are three new hires, one retired, rehired, one retired, sorry, one rehired retiree, one broken contract, one promotion, one leave, and one increase in FTE.
And so, the rehire was to replace the broken contract, it looks like.
Mr. O'Neil, do you remember? I don't remember offhand.
This is mathematics teacher.
I just thought the one move from a music teacher to transportation planner was an interesting move.
Yes, it was.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I now need a motion for the approval of proposed regulation, proposed revisions to the policy for citizen participation.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Mrs. McKay?
We have discussed the revisions to citizen participation over the past several meetings. And the proposed revisions return again for your consideration and action. And you can see in red, some of the things that we changed from last time, which includes, we have in there in red, registering in advance digitally. We have in there that those who are registered, their names would be listed on the website and that they would be contacted by central office. There would be a total of 15 slots. And the selection of speakers, if over 15, would be made by staff in a viewpoint neutral manner.
And, and it seems like, we, we've had less than a dozen, maybe the last two or three meetings. We had zero tonight. And then, people get aggravated and there's 40. And I don't think people quite understand, when we have that many in the, in the big meetings, these two ladies have sat here and gone through the cards, tried to group them by subject, tried to pick the ones and tried to narrow it down. And, and we did have...
In four minutes.
Yes. And we did have some instances outside. And, and I just, I, I know there's been a lot of discussion how evil we are not to let people make public comment. But I, I think we give more opportunity than most systems. We give more opportunity than the state board does. Historically, it said, I think, 30 minutes max, which would have been 10 speakers. So, we're increasing that. The one thing I'd like us to think about and see what the other board members think, right now, it's 15 at three minutes. And that covers a lot of our meetings. What if we do get a lot more? Are we willing to say, we'll increase 15 to 25, but take it to two minutes each? And in that way, it's almost the same amount of time, but we are giving some more opportunity to more people. I don't know whatever.
That's a novel thought. I don't know where you, that's a novel thought. I don't know where you got that.
Well, I heard it. Dr. Dorsey, I heard it from some, somebody suggested that. I don't remember whom.
I just need to get it clarified. It says that there are going to be two public participation opportunities.
Well, that's what you would have to determine this evening. So, in writing right now, and you, you know, we can revise this as you see fit. Right now, it says that there would be two public participation times and a total of 15 slots available for the first public participation period. So, the way this is currently written, you really have not limited it to 15 or to 25. You've just limited the first public participation period, you know? And who, what it says in here is whoever didn't get to go during that first citizens participation period would get to go later on in the meeting. So, I think the first thing that the board needs to determine is, do you want to limit it to 15 total for three minutes each or 25 for two minutes each if there are more? Or do you not want to limit it?
Okay. Does it say that, where does it say about the second opportunity?
It says, in, in that paragraph that you're looking at right now, it says there will be two public participation opportunities during the meeting, after preliminary items, and again after action items. And then, and then it says a total of 15 slots will be available during the first public participation period.
But it doesn't address anything about the second?
No. So, I think the assumption there is that whatever is left, whoever is left who didn't get to, to speak during the first period would get to speak during the second period.
I, I think, I only remember in my four years, that happening once or twice. And I, I don't know what you guys, it had been six years. I, I, my inclination would be get rid of the, the, the second one. Now, the one time people stayed, they actually stayed, and it was 10 or 15 that stayed. And I, I don't know if that, I'd almost rather see the 25 at two minutes and not have the second one. Because that was a good idea. But I, I don't know what you guys think. Like, like I say, it's, at the state board, you don't have a second chance. Oh, Mrs. Herbert?
Sorry. You've only missed me about five times tonight, but that's okay. You're only, it's all right. Oh, my God.
You can complain to somebody else.
I know. And trust me, I'm calling you out on this because I've been very quiet. A couple of things. This is, we, this is a business meeting. And I find that when we had the first citizens, then we get started, and then you go to that second one. And it's like, what are we all doing? We're back at that. You know, once you get that little engine that could, you, you need to keep going. And I know, we've had all kinds of comments that we should listen to everybody. Trust me, you can call us, you can email us, you can text us, you can come to my, they have come to my house at the white truck and, and all that kind of stuff. So, there's so many different ways that they can get in contact with us that I, I, I think that, I don't think we need the second one. Because we, once we get started, I want to get the business meeting going. And yes, people do have the right for, to their opinions. And the other thing that I know has been concerning to others is topic on the agenda. Well, I really like that because of the fact that they can meet us so many other ways. And I think that makes sense. I know the superintendent would like 15. Am I correct? Or?
I, I think, I think a reasonable amount. So, that, my main concern is when we had so many and we were doing business at 11 o'clock at night, I don't know that any of us were necessarily making the best decisions that we could make at 11 o'clock at night. So, that's my main concern is that, is that we're able to get our business meeting accomplished in a reasonable amount of time so that we can focus while we're still awake.
And I also want to also think about these people back here. They've been here since 7:30 or 8 o'clock. Maybe some of you drifted in at 10 o'clock today. I don't know. Just get your job done. That's what you're supposed to do. And, you know, and I didn't call you all. But I, I just feel that we have done so much. And we're a county that we allow people to talk. And I know we have some newbies on here that want everybody to talk. But when you have 10 people stand up there and say the same stinking thing 10 times.
Right.
Do you think we're all listening in here? You, you just blur it all out. So, I, you know, 15 to 25 is fine. I'm sorry, I just tell how I think and, and, and I'm just me. But come on, people, we need some common sense and move the meetings on. And I do want to hear citizen participation. But we need to be smart about it and not start, stop, and then go off on all these tangents. And we've had some go off tangents that had nothing to do with our meetings at all. And it's like, what are we doing? So, that's it.
What, well, a question for you. What you said about on the agenda, what would you think if we didn't require it was on the agenda, but that was one of the criteria for selection? The first choice would go to people on the agenda. That way, that, that way, if we have a, we only have 10 and they're talking off the agenda, who cares? Are you okay with that?
Mr. Kyler, I don't have a problem with that at all. But I just want to get to business. And, and if there are 15 people that want to come in and talk about the agenda, please do so. So, I know we're going to have people come in here about the Formod Day. I guarantee you, there'll be people in here for the Formod Day. And either for or against. So, we, we need to hear from those people first, not about something about, somebody didn't hand out a paper right at school or something like that. We want to hear that, but you can just pick up the phone and, and call Carrie Gaddis and complain. And then she'll get it to the right person. So, yeah.
And I think it's written that way here.
Ms. Dusky, I think, was next.
I just have a small linguistic comment so we can keep continuing the discussion.
I was just going to say, to your point, Mr. Kyler, we did say it that way, or Ms. McKay wrote it that way. So, the selection of speakers will be conducted by staff with the first priority being given to items on the meeting agenda. It's not saying that you can't talk about something that's not on the agenda.
Yeah, don't restrict it.
It's just that first priority. Because if there's something that we're taking action on and making a vote that night, we want to make sure that we hear those comments as for first priority. And other folks, like, if, if they don't get chosen for that night, there are other ways that they can contact us. So, I'll, I'll let you go next. I just...
Okay. So, I just want to clarify with Article Five, Section, Item Five. It says the board reserves the right to limit the number of speakers. However, in the policy statement, it says that the staff will select, implying that the staff has the power over how many participants. Is that a legal statement? That, is there a reason that the board technically has power over the number? Or is that just a...
I think, I think what was meant there is that if the board, if there was an exceptional situation, the board could determine that more than 25 would get to speak that evening if we were hearing from an extraordinary number of, of people who wanted to speak.
Okay. So, we just reserve the right to have power over changing that at the night? Okay.
Right. And, and there have been times where we've had a very large number of people who've signed up to speak. And you've had a triage, the, the cards in advance, so that we didn't have duplicity, duplication, redundancy, just so that we, we'd give everybody a fair shot. You've had to limit that. And so, that's the, the board reserving that right. I think the difference between Five, Section 5.5, and Section 3 is that staff are applying the viewpoint neutral criteria with first priority being given to matters on the agenda in advance of the meeting. Whereas, in Section 5.5, it's during the meeting itself.
Thank you.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Did you have another?
Ms. Patagia?
I did have one. You can go.
No, I just wanted to point out, I mean, I know a lot, we hear a lot of, you know, we're violating this, we're violating, that we're breaking the law. We have an attorney. We pay our attorney very well to, you know, represent us. I don't think you would purposely be like, oh, you're good if we weren't, you know? I, I'm pretty sure if something was excessively wrong, if anything was wrong, any policy, anything of that magnitude, you would say, I have a concern.
Well, we, we, we did review this. And we did offer language, some of which we offered earlier than as we went along. Some of which is updating, that, that no one really has any disagreements. For example, changing the word citizen to public.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. It's a necessary change.
Right.
It's, it's, it's not a change that anybody has any concern about. As, as Mr. Kyler noted, we are better at providing citizens an opportunity to speak than a lot of the local boards around the state and indeed the state board itself. Talking about signing up to speak on a matter on the agenda, if you were to sign up to speak before a committee at the Maryland General Assembly, and you want to speak on HB 533, you better speak on HB 533 or the committee chair is going to call you out of order and move on to the next speaker. You can't say, oh, by the way, I would like to see you introduce a bill on this, that, or the other thing. There's a need for an orderly process. This revision, or rather, these revisions are designed to do just that, without limiting anybody's opportunity to participate, without limiting anybody's opportunity to provide feedback. As Mrs. Herbert said, there are many ways to let the board members know their concerns. And it should also be noted that on those occasions where we have a major issue, such as a redistricting, such as a school closure, we have special meetings as provided for in other policies. And we will typically have those meetings in a high school auditorium. And we will allow any number of people to come and speak on those very important special issues. That's not what we're talking about here.
Right.
So, we want to maintain order. We want to provide fairness. We want to give people an opportunity to speak. And yet, not keep people here till 11 o'clock in the evening who came in at 7:00. who came in at 7:30 in the morning.
Right, and to your point too, regarding like, you know, when you have to sign up to speak on a bill, a lot of times they want to know what you're going to say early, they want your, like, your paragraph or your sentence or whatever, and they'll let you know if they chose you. So there's never a guarantee with that either, and that's, that's state, that can be the federal level. Yeah, we're, we're pretty welcoming and lenient when it comes to that. We don't ask for your paragraph beforehand, we could, just like everybody else does, but we don't. You know, you can come and speak, you know, what you would like on the agenda and everyone else after that. But I, I do appreciate, you know, you making sure that all these things are taken care of properly in the event, you know, someone tries to, you know, or does, you know, want to fight it and doesn't agree with it. You know, we do have, you as an attorney, overviewing all that material to make sure we're not violating laws, we're not violating anybody's constitutional rights, we are looking at everything properly.
And, and viewpoint neutrality is very high on those things that, that I wanted to be careful about.
Right.
So we're not saying, well, I don't like your point of view, so we're not going to allow you to speak. No, absolutely not.
Right, it's not us. So I, that was one thing we kept hearing from the public, you know, what board member's going to be picking, it's not the board members.
Right.
You know, and it's someone within CCPS, and it will be viewed with neutrality.
Yeah, I think the viewpoint neutrality was something that we took really seriously, which is why we even asked people on the blue cards in the past to say, what are you speaking on, and are you for or against? Because we wanted to hear both sides, and we wanted to hear equally from both sides, right? So, um, so we're certainly not trying to suppress free speech or trying to limit it that we're only hearing one side of an argument, that's certainly not what we're trying to accomplish. So I, I like the revisions that have been made to the wording to include viewpoint neutrality, um, you know, that the, the selection is going to be giving priority to items that are on the agenda, but you can still, you know, if we're not overbooked, then you could still come and talk about anything you want. And the fact that we do have multiple means, um, to, to reach out to the board. So I don't feel that strongly about the 15 slots, you know, if we wanted to do the 25 at two minutes, or 15 at three, or even if you wanted to do 20 at three, like, I, I think we need to keep it to an hour, right? Like, I, we do all want to hear from the public. I, I think that hearing those viewpoints over the last two years have been very helpful, and have actually helped shape a lot of our thinking and our revisions, um, trying to take those viewpoints into account. So I, I, I think as long as we keep it to an hour, um, I'm okay with that. So however, however we want to logistically do that, um, I'm okay with that.
And eliminate the second time? Do one hour, one time?
I think it did, I, I agree with Ms. Herbert, I think it's better to do one time. But I, I als, and, and I also think that that may help people from a planning perspective, right? Like, I think first come, first served isn't necessarily equitable, right? Like, you've got people that work, and, you know, if they really feel strongly about something and they're trying to get here, but they get here and there's a, a multitude of people, they know that they don't have a chance, or, and they might have actually taken off from work, and then they get here and they realize that they're not going to get to speak, like, that's, that's not a good situation. At least this kind of creates some orderly fashion around it, and people will know, like, yeah, you were selected, or, you know, and then you know whether you need to be here or not. So I, I think those are all good things, but in the spirit of wanting to hear from the public, um, I just wanted to, to say, like, is there a way to make this maybe even a little bit larger of initiative? Like, if we kind of got back to a, a town halls type of, um, thing in conjunction with this, right? Like, if, if we did a, a town hall or two or three a year to kind of reach out to various communities, like, as part of the budget building process or whatever, to say, okay, you have one at Liberty High School, and you have one at Man Valley, or, you know, and, and hear more about those topics, and then that, that kind of gives people additional opportunities to, to talk with the board and, and provide their feedback, without it having to be, you know, a Wednesday night on the, the second Wednesday of the, the month at 5:00 PM, like, that's your only opportunity. So just kind of, maybe that would help people understand that we're not trying to limit free speech, right? Like, no, we, we really do want to hear from you if, if we can kind of make a larger initiative.
And, and for instance, with redistricting, there automatically was going to be public meetings. So, so, yeah. So, we would need a motion to amend for the changes we want to make, so, um, 15 slots at three minutes is 45 minutes plus the time they get up and back, so it's probably within your hour.
Yeah.
And 25 at two minutes would be within an hour, and, and no, and only one time, and we're happy with the criteria. Do you, do you want to make an amended motion?
I'm, I'm okay with it the way it is. I mean, other than, we, we probably want to, do we want to state that we're not going to have a second?
I, I think so.
Yeah, we need to take that out.
I think we want to eliminate that.
Okay. So how would, how would this have to change?
We would take out the sentence that there, that says there will be two public participation opportunities during the meeting after preliminary items and again after action items. If we just eliminate that, that sentence, um, and then eliminate the word first out of the next sentence, so that it just says that we'd have a total of 15 three-minute slots will be available during the public participation period. Those who registered will be notified of whether they've been selected to speak during the public particip, participation period before noon on the day of the board meeting.
And, and Mr. Emeli, if, if we do that change, like she just said it, we're not violating anything if something's going on and we tell staff, go ahead and let 25 or 30 speak? Or, or, or does this keep us from doing that?
We could add in that the board maintains or retains the discretion to allow additional speakers if the board deems appropriate at any given meeting.
Yeah, I, I think, we don't, we don't want to tie our hands, but.
You, you, you don't want to tie your hands, but in doing that, you want to be very careful that, that you're consistent, you're not arbitrary, you're, you're maintaining viewpoint neutral criteria, so.
Okay. Does somebody want to?
But discretion is certainly appropriately vested in the board.
Does somebody want to make a motion that we, what Mrs. McKay read and what he just told us?
So, Mr. Emeli, can, can you provide that wording for flexibility?
So, I'm beginning with the sentence ending 9:00 PM, deleting the entire sentence that reads, there will be two public participation opportunities during the meeting, uh, after preliminary items and again after action items. That entire sentence is deleted. The next sentence reads, a total of 25 slots at two minutes each will be available during the public participation period. The word first is deleted. Then I would add, the board retains the discretion to allow additional speakers as it deems appropriate.
The board retains the discretion.
To allow additional speakers as it deems appropriate.
And, and I guess the only question is, is, is this, is the consensus, we want 15 at three minutes, or 25 at two minutes, or, or either option?
I think the, what Mr. Emeli had just said about we retain discretion, um, I think that would cover that. So we would have probably the first initial 15, however many apply online or call in.
I, I think you have to be very careful with the amount of time given to speakers, because people practice, I, I've, I've noted that people are very careful, uh, some people, not everybody, some people are very careful in.
They're three minutes.
Rehearsing their proposed remarks, and you see them finishing up at 2 minutes and 58 seconds, and they're coherent and they're thorough, and, and so that's obviously been well thought out. Other people do ramble, of course, but, you know, um, and you want to give people that heads up, oh, you thought we were going to limit you at two minutes, we're giving you three minutes now.
Right.
And, and what you absolutely want to avoid is, well, I'm giving you three minutes, but I'm keeping you at two.
Right.
That's dangerous. You don't want to do that.
No.
I think.
One hour.
For consistency, then maybe we want to say 15 at three, because we've been doing the three minutes, and, and that seems to suit people.
Yeah.
You're okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. You ready?
Yep.
Okay, so then I will make a, do, do we want to cross out that entire sentence, or do we just want to say there will be one public participation opportunity during the meeting after preliminary items, period? That way people know when it is?
That works, yeah. Yep.
Okay.
That works.
Since it's a change from, from what it is currently, we want to give them a heads up that it's a change, right?
Yep.
Okay. So then I will make a motion to amend as the following, so that the sentence beginning after 9:00 PM, um, it will say, there will be one public participation opportunity during the meeting after preliminary items. It'll then go on to say, a total of 15 slots will be available during the public participation period, so cancel, cross out the word first. And then after that statement, it will say, the board retains the discretion to allow additional speakers as it deems appropriate. That's the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on the amendment to the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Um, any discussion on the motion as amended? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now, I need a motion for the approval of revisions to the right of entry and indemnification agreement with Carroll County Youth Services Bureau.
Ms. Dr. Dorsey.
Dr. Dorsey, second?
I'll second.
Okay. Mrs. McKay.
Last month, the board approved the right of entry agreement with the Youth Services Bureau. Subsequently, legal counsel identified some required technical changes which have been made, so it returns tonight again for your approval.
And, and the copy we're looking at has the change of the Carroll County Youth Services Bureau owns property, and owns is deleted, and leases is added. And that's the copy we're looking at, that's the motion we made.
Right, and it looks like there's also a date change at the bottom.
There's a date as well.
Um, did we do that last time? We, we said it said 2022 and that was incorrect, do we want it?
Well, it was blank and then 2022, um, and so now it's, it's, it's added that, um, shall continue until 11:59 PM on, uh, December 31, 2023.
Okay, and, and the proposal is, this document remains as signed and, and we need to initial two places, the date added and leases.
That's correct.
Okay, so we're just approving that Mr. Kyler can just initial those two changes?
Two spots.
That's correct.
And nothing else changes?
So the initials will be from Mr. Kyler on behalf of the board, and Ms. Davis on behalf of the Carroll County Youth Services Bureau.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I now need a motion for the approval of appointments.
So move.
Second?
I'll second.
Mrs. McKay.
I have one recommendation tonight for appointment. I'm recommending that Hope Ferguson, um, be appointed acting assistant principal at Mount Airy Middle School, where she serves as a math teacher. This is due to the current assistant principal going out on leave.
Okay, and so, so this is an acting position on a temporary basis?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? Any unfinished business, new business? Uh, Mrs. Herbert, did you have a card up?
Yes, I did. While Mr. Orning and the group is up there talking, uh, one other thing got away from us, and I know Mr. Rodriguez was our, in charge of phys ed and things like that. Two years ago, the state changed dramatically the grading policy for high schools in phys ed, uh, without participation. I've never figured that out, and I keep hearing from physical education teachers, uh, we are passing all these students and they can like sit on the sidelines, and if they get a really good grade on their exam, um, that's wonderful and they pass. And they sent out a video, and I tell you verbatim that, uh, the man in the video states that no one ever died exercising in blue jeans, because, um, they said, made statements about change of clothes and all that. Well, I don't think we want to set sweaty, send sweaty kids back into the English classroom stinking and not changing clothes. So I, I really do think that we need to address that from the state. That came down from the state right before COVID or during COVID, and I, I know that grading policy really needs to be addressed Carroll County style, because I, it's inappropriate. It's not, that's not us.
So, Ms. Herbert, are you asking that, that we review?
I, I, I want to review, and I want to hear from phys ed, high school phys ed teachers, uh, the difficulty in grading and putting them in a bad situation. And I, it's not fair, so, uh, that definitely, and also, they did it pretty slick, that, you know, that their timing was great, but to have students not dress or whatever's going on, and I want a clarification for parents and, and help these phys ed teachers out of this mess, because it's not, it's not right to put them in there in that situation.
We can certainly look at adding that as an agenda item to a future board meeting.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't have to be tomorrow, it's been put off, but I remember that, and, and, uh, I wanted to say something, because the bell, the light went off in the brain, and I thought, we really need to address that, because it is a problem. It's very aggravating for those, those phys ed teachers, and put them in, in a bad situation, which we shouldn't be doing, so.
Okay. Any other comments? At 4:00 PM on Wednesday, November 30th, board members meet with the Carroll County Slate delegation in the boardroom at 125 North Court Street, Westminster, Maryland. And somebody asked me over the weekend, that meeting is the Board of Ed and the delegation, that's not a joint meeting with the commissioners, that would be a, a different meeting. Yep, correct. At 1:00 PM on Wednesday, December 7th, swearing in of new Board of Education members in boardroom at 125 North Court Street, Westminster.
And that's also a recognition of current seated board members.
Look, the people you're getting rid of. At 5:00 PM on Wednesday, December 14th, there's a board meeting with citizen participation in the boardroom at 125 North Court Street. Any other discussion or comments? Uh, motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I wanted to drag it out to 8:20, because I lost the bet.